Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Wednesday, August 6th. It's good to have everyone here this morning. We'll go and get started on this somewhat lengthy agenda today. If you would, let's please rise for the prayer and the pledge. Commissioner Ward, can you lead us today?
Yes. When we come to you today as we conduct our county business, we pray that you will guide our decision-making processes, Lord. Pray for everyone in the room here with us today. We pray for everyone out there traveling on these roads. Pray for anyone in the community, Lord, that's sick, ill, or just needs your healing touch, or just your touch at all, Lord Jesus. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Morone, do we need to amend the agenda at all?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to bring up, bring a few items to your attention. One, earlier when I first did the first agenda draft, it included the Sheriff's Department with some commendations for a couple, a few deputies actually from Liberty County. That has been moved to the 20th because of scheduling issues with all the deputies. Also, at the very, one of the last items on your agenda was the Weems Memorial about a purchase of, of an ambulance and a power lift. That has been also posted to 20th. Commissioner Amerson has some questions he'd like to meet with David and the EMS Director. So they'll meet together and we'll put it on there. Erin Griffiths' report is printed separately because she had her items and her motions early on. She just added her narratives yesterday, so I printed that separately. And in front of you, Mr. Chairman, you have a few speaker cards. Those are not any particular items specific. I believe most of those cards are not, well, I'm sorry, the three I got online are not. You've received others this morning. I didn't look at those. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that you'll need to recognize public comments at, you know, before the Commissioners engage in discussion this morning.
Okay.
Those are outside of, I'm sorry, those are outside of public comments. Those are more for the action items along the trail of our agenda.
Okay. So a motion to approve the agenda as it's been published. A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we will be approving the minutes paying the county bills. The minutes are from the regular meeting of June 18th, 2025?
So moved.
We have motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That's also unanimous. So before we go to the time-sensitive item with Mr. Theriault, we do have a couple of speaker cards that have put down any and all items on the agenda, or those not on the agenda raised by staff. I would remind everyone before we get started this morning, if you want to speak about anything that's listed in our agenda as informational, you probably need to do that during the public comment period here in the beginning that's labeled "Public Comment" in the agenda. As far as the agendated items, we will try to do our best to remember and include everyone and not exclude anybody's time. But again, the public comment period at the beginning is for the informational items, and then we can address the action items as we get to them. All right, turn your shoulder. It's 9:05. Mr. Theriault on the line?
Yes, Mr. Theriault's there. I guess he's unmuted.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it's, I hate to be the stickler woman, but it's 9:04. So I hate that we have to burn a minute or something somewhere else. I don't know if you want to take Howard or...
No, we're waiting to do this at time sensitive.
Okay.
David? David, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I thought they were waiting until 9:05.
We are.
I'm just doing a radio check.
He's just making sure that you can actually hear us and everything was good.
All is good.
It is 9:05.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Theriault.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item that I have before you today, as you may recall, there's a Burt Harris claim that's been filed by the Landing at SGI LLC regarding the County St. George Island Corridor Overlay District. And under Section 70.001 Florida statutes, there are two responses that the county is statutorily required to provide to the claim. One item is called a settlement offer. You should have two letters in the ray that will say "The Landing at SGI, LLC," Burt Harris Act settlement offer. The second letter says "Statement of allowable uses," and I'm just going to briefly walk through what each letter does. Under the statute, we are required to make a settlement offer, and there's a list of several options that the county can select from. In our letter pertaining to the settlement offer lays out the background of how we got to the St. George Island Corridor Overlay District. And then we also lay out the claim that's on pages three and four of our letter. And then we lay out nine reasons why we believe the Burt Harris claim is legally deficient. And I'm not going to walk through every argument that we've set forth. After we address our nine arguments, we then make the statutorily mandated settlement offer, and we are allowed as a settlement offer to state, quote, "No change to the action of the governmental entity," which means that you are not going to repeal your, your overlay district for St. George Island. And you're not, at this juncture, going to entertain flexibility with development options, that you're going to stand by the action that the board took in 2018. So I would, I don't know if you want to vote on each one separately, Mr. Chairman. I'll address the settlement or the Statement of allowable uses next, unless you want to vote on the settlement offer letter first.
It'd probably be better to vote on them separately, I would imagine, but we do have public comments on each of these items before we start to vote on anything.
Would you like me to go over the Statement of allowable uses letter then next?
Yes, we'll do that after we have the public comment and then vote on the first item, if that's okay.
Certainly, sir.
Ms. Goodson?
I have no comments.
Okay. Ms. Sanders?
I don't have a comment on the settlement offer.
Okay. I didn't fill out the card, y'all did. I'm just asking.
I'll get another opportunity.
Mr. Bean?
Mason Bean, Concerned Citizens, got that packet late. I didn't get, nobody's had a chance to read it for this late hour. But on the settlement offer, I have to quote my dear friend Barbara Sanders years ago that said, "Let's cut to the chase. Let's buy this property and make it a public park." Let's put that on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ms. Klaus attending via Zoom? Phone number ends in 2019.
I have a Zoom user with their hands raised, but I, there's no way for me to identify as Ms. Klaus.
They don't have a phone number attached to it?
Nope. The one to the top that says Zoom user. Do you want me to take a chance and see if, if it is?
Well, we can see, but it is for her, though. It's not just for...
Yeah, I'll click a lot of talk and have them identify themselves, because if they didn't fill out a speaker card, then, you know.
Sorry, Michael, I'm on my computer and not my phone. This is Cheryl.
Okay, thank you.
And I have no comments either. I mean, I echo what Barbara and Mason have said, and let's try to buy this property, but it's not really, and it's not really relevant to this particular issue. I have nothing to say. Thank you, David, for your work.
Thank you. All right, now we're back to the board. As far as the settlement offer, what's the pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Amerson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Go ahead, Mr. Theriault.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second letter is the Statement of allowable uses. It tracks the same framework as the settlement offer about the history, the claim, our defenses to the claim. And then the statute requires us to lay out what regulations apply to the property. And so you'll see, starting on page 13, Paragraph C, Statement of allowable uses, from 13 all the way to page... Doesn't want to open. To page 21, we are identifying the comprehensive plan for native use for the property. The property has a commercial future land use map designation. It's zoned C3 commercial recreation, and it's located in the St. George Island Corridor Overlay District. And then we simply set forth all of those regulations that pertain to the property that the county has on the books, and that's a statutory requirement. So I, I am requesting a motion to approve this letter for us to finalize it and provide it to the claiming.
All right. I do have a question before we proceed back to public comments. In what you've added in your letter, does, what, is there anything that addresses the height? Because I don't see it in here. Because I know, let me go back and clarify what I'm saying. In the zoning code C3, the attachment, it, it's actually an older version of our document, and it says the maximum building height is 35 feet. That should be 47.
Then I'll need to get a current copy of that, Mr. Chairman, and attach it to the draft letter.
Right. I just wanted to make sure if we took any action on it, that we make sure we clarify that in the motion when we take action.
Thank you for doing so.
No problem. All right, Ms. Goodson, public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have no comment on the settlement.
Okay. Ms. Sanders?
You have a statement.
All right.
I have a generic comment, and I don't want to sound like a cranky Yankee, but I got this last night after checking periodically on the agenda for items. So, because I'm, I don't do well at night. I like to start in the morning. It's probably a great letter. Although, I'm glad you had, Mr. Theriault is an expert in this field. But I can't say from my glancing I read last night whether everything in it is accurate. And there, just for example, the deed reference, and David, you may want to check on this. It's very confusing because they, they recorded a bunch of different deeds, and the final one was called a corrective special warranty deed, which is actually recorded at 1392702. It's confusing because you see at the top the 139593, but that is not the, the deed reference. The other problem I have with it, and that's just Barbara being nitpicky checking what I can check real quick. The other problem is, as I understand it, this, this letter of allowable uses is only that 11.25 acres, which is only a partial portion of that special warranty deed. As I also understand it, that was submitted in January of 2025. Well, to be honest with you, I never really looked at that project because we, the county was in the process of the PUD ordinance, and I thought we would have another opportunity to look at what they're proposing in that 11.25 acres. Honestly, I didn't even realize they had shrunk the project until kind of recently. All I can do is tell you, if you accept Mr. Theriault's letter today, which I think you're under a time crunch, I'm not sure, I would put things a little wiggle room, like 11.25 acres more or less. I wouldn't be quite so didactic, because I want to be sure that if there's an error in this allowable uses, like you just pointed out, Ricky, that we can fix it, that we're, we're not putting ourselves in a straitjacket and writing a carte blanche or a blank check to the developer, because I haven't had a chance to do the Barbara Sanders nitpicky part. Not that Mr. Theriault didn't do a great job, but, so just to that extent, I'd like to build in more or less and, and, you know, or some sort of language, I would say, if there's a mistake, we have a chance to fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Mr. Mason? Ms. Cheryl?
It's not raised.
Okay. All right, so on, just to clarify, on page three, under Section 2, the end of the second paragraph says the property is 11.72 acres.
Oh, wait. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a quick reading.
Yes, ma'am, that's all good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may interject and follow up with a few comments related to certain issues.
Yes, ma'am. You have your time.
My name is Allison Goodson. I am a St. George Island homeowner, not a rental, and I'm a regulatory attorney. I'm also the author of the memorandum that you all received concerning what I believe to be some legal issues with the manner in which the PUD ordinance was adopted on July 25th.
Ms. Goodson, I'm sorry, could you put the mic a little bit closer up? I want everybody to be able to hear you.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I might, I might just speak louder as well. And I think some of what Barbara is talking about dovetails with my comments concerning the July 25th process, which is simply transparency. And if this is an appropriate time to talk about that, I'd like to do that. If you intend to discuss further the, the manner in which the PUD ordinance was adopted, and my comments would be more apt to be brought up during that conversation, I'll wait.
Yep. So we, right now, what we're talking about is this, is approving this letter.
Understood.
But if, but if it does come up, it's already, you've already filled out to be able to be called up for, for that discussion.
Understood.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any more questions, or what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would, I would kind of have to tend to agree. I do want some legroom and wiggle room. Mr. Attorney Theriault, can you, is that okay to do, to make a motion to, I guess, amend if needed this settlement offer or agreement?
This, the document you're on now is a statement of allowable uses, and it is simply a reflection of what's in your comprehensive plan, what's in your land, your land development regs or code, zoning code, and what's in your overlay district. It is, I have no issue adding more or less. I believe the 11.72 was in the, the claim letter, and I believe the book and page number was also in the claim letter. If, if you don't mind, Madam Commissioner, I think Ms. Sanders had a different book and page number, but I did not get that. Would it be okay if I asked her to repeat what book and page number she believes is appropriate?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll give that to Mr. Sh...
No, go ahead.
Sorry. It was 1392, page 702. And regarding the acreage, and I'm glad Mr. Theriault could change it, that acreage is off your property appraiser map where you get your tax ID numbers, and it includes some submerged land, in my personal opinion, or do, or land that's been eroded. So that's why I think, and when you get down to doing your density, that number is crucial, because where you start counting your land is where you get your density. Thank you, Mr. Theriault.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would request is a motion that allows us to check the book and page number, and if we agree with Ms. Sanders, change it to 1392, page 702. And then allow me to do so in your motion, and to add the words "more or less" as it pertains to the acreage in Paragraph 2.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. You go ahead.
No.
I was just going to make that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with those changes. Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, Commissioners? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, anything else, Mr. Theriault?
No, Mr. Chairman, unless you would like me to address the issue regarding whether there needs to be a rehearing of the PUD ordinance. I can do that now, or if you'd like me to...
I think that would be appropriate, and we have, again, we do have people with cards filled out to be able to speak on that items. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I have read the memorandum that is dated July 29th, 2025. I've looked at the Statute 125.66. I've reviewed the ordinance, the PUD ordinance. Again, I've reviewed the notice of intent, and I've also reviewed the Florida Supreme Court Court decision in Newmont, N-E-U-M-O-N-T versus State in two thousand and seven. Let me start my remarks by saying, I don't think there's anybody in the room who can predict with one hundred percent accuracy what a circuit court's going to do if somebody brings a lawsuit to challenge, whether you need to renotice and conduct another hearing on the adoption of the PUD ordinance. I will state that I believe you all did it appropriately, based upon Newmont, again, which is a Florida Supreme Court decision. Let me just read a couple, three lines. Says Monroe County advocates instead for a definition of substantial or material change based on the ordinance's general purpose. The county argues that only changes that alter the original purpose of a proposed planned use ordinance should require the enactment process to begin anew. We believe such a standard would be faithful both to the text of section one two five point six six and to the public interest. Now, if you use the, the concept of what was the original purpose, turning to the PUD ordinance, section S dash eight point one is entitled Purpose and Intent. And I'm quoting from the ordinance, "To provide an alternative to the development standards otherwise regulated by this code, Franklin County establishes this planned unit development as an option to the traditional land use or zoning parameters of development. The intent is to allow a property owner to plan a development design, offering flexible development standards, phasing options, and that allows a diversity and mixture of uses and/or housing types within one planned development application for review while providing a public benefit to the county." I would paraphrase that as saying a general purpose or the original purpose was to adopt an ordinance that allows PUDs in Franklin County. And the second part, if I were to paraphrase it, was to establish a process and criteria to evaluate a proposed PUD. The only thing that I believe the objection pertains to is the change in section S dash eight point two H, which said, at the time, said as of April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, no new PUDs will be allowed on St. George Island. The board deleted the prohibition of no PUDs on St. George Island. I don't believe the deletion of PUDs on St. George Island alters the purpose and intent that I just read, and it doesn't alter the title of the PUD ordinance. So I, I believe you have a legitimate argument, if somebody files a lawsuit in circuit court challenging the county's adoption of the PUD ordinance, that you did not need to restart it. Now, in an abundance of caution, the commission could decide to conduct another hearing, readvertise, publish the, the, the version that you all agreed upon, I think on July twenty-fifth, conduct a hearing, and that would resolve the issue that's being raised in this memorandum. Again, I can't predict with certainty what a circuit court judge may or may not do, but I do believe you have a legitimate basis to say that you did it correctly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Theriaque.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Goodson.
Allison Goodson, again, eleven oh nine East Gulf Beach Drive. Newmont is a nuanced decision from the Supreme Court in that it focuses on a provision of law that requires notice of particular types of ordinance changes to be published only in title. And so to the extent that the purpose, the substantive purpose of those types of ordinances is, is not changed in title, the Newmont decision doesn't apply. The ordinance notice provisions that you all are required to adhere to with respect to the PUD adoption ordinance requires you to publish the actual text of the ordinance itself, the full language of the ordinance. It's a separate provision of chapter one twenty-five from what was the focus of Newmont, and the Supreme Court in Newmont made clear to distinguish the obligations that a county commission like you all is under when an ordinance falls under a title-only notice requirement versus the obligations that you all are under in this circumstance where the full text of the ordinance is required to be published. There are several interest groups in the area and on St. George Island and across the Panhandle who stood down from coming before you and expressing their views on this ordinance once St. George Island was taken out of that ordinance. And that in itself is evidence that the change that was made at the last minute on July twenty-fifth was substantive. Your counsel described it as substantive. It was a total surprise to the folks who I think have resoundingly come before this commission and told you, we object to PUDs on St. George Island and perhaps elsewhere in Franklin County, but certainly not on this sensitive barrier island. And this is what I wanted to talk to you all about today. I do stand by what I said in my memorandum. Because you have that memorandum and are on notice of the potential sunshine violations and ordinance notice violations, you face individually potential serious consequences if you nevertheless go forward with the process. So I would strongly recommend that you heed Mr. Theriaque's advice to go ahead and renotice that hearing, to hear from your constituents who are overwhelmingly opposed to this, and to do what is your job as their representative, representatives in this context, listen to them, and adopt policies that they put you in those seats to adopt that are consistent with their values and their vision for their community. I think that's your obligation to these, these folks, and that it's not just a technical legal obligation, it's one that puts you at genuine risk if you choose to ignore. I don't need to remind this commission that you all also are under the direction of the Florida Handbook on Ethics for Public Employees. Perhaps there are voices behind the scenes that we're not hearing at these meetings where overwhelmingly the public has told you hell no on PUDs on St. George Island. Perhaps there are folks who are urging you that there's some benefit to them if you do go forward with this process. But county commissioners are not authorized to use their vote and use their public position to confer a benefit on themselves, on their spouses, on their business associates or others, and the penalties for doing that are stiff. And so to the extent that there are folks in your ear behind the scenes trying to put you in that position, I hope you will remind them of what they're really asking from you and stand firm against those voices and instead move forward with policy that aligns with the voices and the values of your voters.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Ms. Sanders?
Thank you, sir. Barbara Sanders, I, ditto what Ms. Goodson said. We went through, we being the citizens, I don't know how many public hearings with your P and Z board, and we hashed out language and we tussled and fought, and that poor P and Z board heard three times what y'all heard at your public hearing. And they came up with an ordinance that they sent on to you, and when I read it, I went, all right, well, they did take the island out. I don't, I can relax. So I did not, like I didn't get a chance to do Mr. Theriaque's letter. I didn't nitpick your PUD ordinance. I mean, it was generically okay. It's a standard PUD ordinance, but I was taken by surprise at the meeting, and I don't do well with surprise. I carry my books around, I highlight, I underline, I notate. So I didn't say anything that night. That's the objective. But I, later on, sleep on it, I went, well, wait a second, I didn't have a chance to really talk to them about that. For example, your little handout talked about how the PUD process is collaborative. I would have pointed out, there's no entree for the public between the developer and your planner. So developer submits, planner does her job, she sends it to you, and it comes to you with a presumption of correctness because your employee that's an expert they've hired has looked it over and said, well, this is, this is a good PUD ordinance. But Barbara Sanders hadn't had a chance to look at it. So when I, if I were going to go back to the drawing board on your PUD ordinance, I would put some sort of collaborative, let the public have a, a say before, because even your planner, even your lawyer, we can all make boo-boos mistakes with acreage, et cetera, citations. So I want you to do what Mr. Theriaque is basically saying you can do, which is bite the bullet, spend a little extra money, let's do it again, have everybody come in and have their say on the, on the real PUD ordinance that includes SGI, or however way you want to look at that, and try again. And I would greatly appreciate that. Nobody's evil, nobody's mean, nobody's bad. We just are human, and sometimes, you know, there are bumps in the road, and you get a chance to fix it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
No.
Okay. Ms. Klaus?
She's raised her hand, sir. Yes, she has.
It's like you knew I was going to talk. I don't know how you knew. This is Cheryl Klaus. I'm a homeowner on St. George Island, and in non-lawyer speak, because I'm not a lawyer, I'm going to kind of reflect the same things that were already said by Ms. Barbara Sanders and Ms. Allison Goodson, which is that we have been in discussion about this for a long time. And one of the earlier initial things that happened before coming out of P and Z is a section of the county was excluded. And I believe that the original purpose was to put PUDs in Franklin County, but as with every single one of our ordinances, we define those areas. We're talking today about beach fires in all of our public beaches, but we still define them. When you take a section of land out and then re-add it and say, oh, by the way, you're included too, I think that is a substantive change. I don't have the lawries for it, but it is a substantive change, and they are right. A lot of people stood down. A lot of people didn't review properly. A lot of people were really mostly concerned with, with the island and with their personal investments or with the bay and didn't have a chance to be properly noticed to investigate this. So, I mean, we all know how I feel about this, right? My question to you is, is there any way, and I believe that there might be within the rules of order, if you chose to, instead of having to go through the whole process of doing another hearing, of doing the whole nine yards, is there any way, if Mr. Amison was amenable, to changing his motion to not include Schuler's suggestion that SGI be included? I mean, is there any way that he can amend his motion so that SGI is left as the original published ordinance said, as being excluded from this? And does that save the taxpayers' time and money from a decision that we all know is going the way it's going? That's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Klaus. Mr. Theriaque, do you want to respond to any of this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me state emphatically that I am not aware of any sunshine law violation, and the contention that the chairman or a commissioner may have violated the sunshine law by voting for this PUD ordinance, I believe is a frivolous allegation, and I want to state on the record that, that it was such a frivolous allegation. I think you're looking at a policy call more so than a legal call, because again, I believe that there's a legitimate argument that pursuant to Newmont, the general purpose was not changed. And if I used another example, I mean, we're only looking at paragraph eight, two H, and it's just one prong out of several pages. If you accept their argument, under paragraph S eight, two A, says the minimum acreage is five acres. What if you decided seven acres? Are you going to have to start all over again? It said there must be at least five percent if you choose. What if during the board meeting, the boards decided we want ten percent? Does that mean you're going to have to start all over again? It becomes a loop that you, that's incredibly lengthy and incredibly costly, and I believe that's why Newman came down. Look at the general, original purpose of the ordinance. And I don't see the original general purpose of the ordinance changing by deleting a portion of the island from the ordinance, by allowing PUDs on St. George Island. The policy call is, what you're hearing is from some citizens saying that certain members of the public stood down because they believed that St. George Island was not going to be included in allowing PUDs. You do have the discretion to readvertise, renotice, and publish the final version that we did on July twenty-fifth and conduct another public hearing. That's your policy call.
Anyone have any questions for a turn of Theriaque?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. We're now at the public comments. Mr. Ben? Mr. Ben? I got this one. Tall Timbers. I guess they left the room.
I think he went to the restroom. I think he went to the restroom.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mason, do you have anything you want to do under general public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I can't add any of that.
Okay. Ms. Sanders?
All right.
Regular public comments for informational items.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Goodson?
Ms. Sanders.
Okay. And Ms. Klaus?
No hands, or hands, not raised.
All right. So I do have a speaker card here for a gentleman that didn't answer, so he might be at the restroom. If he does come back in, we will come back to it.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, the clarification commission, so we move on to public comments?
Yes.
Okay. So you finished with Attorney Theriaque for the most part?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'm sure.
So there we are. Thank you, Mr. Theriaque.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Have a great day.
Okay. Hold on just a second.
No, no, not for Attorney Theriaque.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Theriaque.
Thank you.
I think that's even right there.
Sir, I think, I think I called your name. Is your name Ben?
Yes.
Yeah. Public comment, sir.
All righty. Good morning.
Good morning. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Sure thing. All righty. Well, yeah, my name is Ben Nacilius. I'm not a local resident. I'm actually from Leon County, and I'm, today I'm representing Tall Timbers Research Station and Land Conservancy from Leon County. Some of you may have heard of us, maybe not, we're a bit, a bit far away, but just in case you haven't, Tall Timbers was a research station established in nineteen sixty-five, primarily looking at the use of prescribed fire as a conservation tool, land management practice. But we've expanded out greatly from there to all manners of research, and then also our land conservancy. Our land conservancy was started in nineteen ninety-nine, primarily working with landowners on voluntary conservation easements to protect their land in perpetuity and protect their little piece of Florida. I'm here today, we have two really big projects coming up that cover the full eleven counties of the Big Bend, including this county right here, and I want to share a little bit of information about that, so I'll just go ahead and jump right in. The first of those is our RCPP program, or the Regional Conservation Partnership Program through the USDA, and that's a twenty-five million dollar, five-year award that Tall Timbers received as a land management assistance grant. So for the full eleven county area, any landowner, any land manager over ten acres is welcome to apply, so it's not just your large thousand, two thousand acre landowners, it's anybody with more than ten acres is willing to, or is welcome to apply and encouraged to do so. And there's really two aspects of that. The first is financial assistance, so that's anywhere between a seventy-five to a hundred percent cost share for your landowners who already know how to manage their land, just need the financial resources to do it, that's land clearing, invasive species removal, things like that. Or there's also land management assistance, which is Tall Timbers staff are going to be working with landowners coming out to their property. For those people that are maybe interested in taking care of their property, being good stewards, but just don't have the expertise to do so, we're able to provide that as well as financial assistance. And that's for, like I said, for, that's, could be tree planting, prescribed fire, usage, invasive species removal, forest stand improvement, really runs the full gamut of land management for anybody over ten acres, so. And I'll get into that in our second section, but we have a large marketing campaign and large information campaign that we're going to be starting, both in direct mailers, Facebook ads, newspaper, radio, every medium that we can really think of to try and get the word out, try and get as many people into this program as possible and get as much stewardship dollars out the door. Our second project is with the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation, and kind of ties in hand in hand. It's the same eleven county area. I'm sure you've heard of the Florida Wildlife Corridor, especially since the Act was passed in twenty twenty-one. But working with the Florida Wildlife Corridor, they primarily worked in peninsular Florida, but they're starting to move up into the rest of Florida as well and have- but they're starting to move up into the rest of Florida as well and have kind of tapped Tall Timbers as the regional, one of the regional experts for the Big Bend region. And we're partnering with them on really essentially helping to make that dream a reality and explore options and bring together partners for creative conservation efforts. And that's on a county-by-county basis, that looks differently. But one of the big opportunities that we have there is there's marketing dollars in there, which includes our marketing campaign to teach people about the Florida Wildlife Corridor, what their role might be, you know, is your land in there? You know, what does that look like potentially for your land and for your future? And then that pairs directly with our RCPP, which is the actual dollars that we have to help landowners take care of their property. If you're a part of the Florida Wildlife Corridor, that's great. And here's some land management dollars to be able to take care of it and kind of contribute your piece. So we're really excited about those two things overlapping. I have a couple of handouts here. If I could leave those with you, that would be great, as well as my contact information. And I'm happy to discuss a little bit more, or if you guys, if anyone wants to reach out, I'm happy to discuss.
Yes, sir. No, thank you for your presentation today. So we'll take the information. We have your contact information. I'm sure some of us might be giving you a call.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to department director reports, I do feel like we do need to, you know, I always say, I try to do the right thing. And I feel like even though Mr. Theriault's given us his input, I personally feel like it would be the right thing to do. I don't want to, because Lord knows we dealt with it a lot. We, as commissioners, have been demeaned, our integrity thrown into question, and I've lost sleep over it because, you know, I don't want people to think that I'm pocketing money or any of us, because, you know, being a commissioner or any political official is not an easy task. But to sit there and have people talk about us the way that they have and our character has just been very disappointing and demeaning. I've cried over it. I'm not a crier. It takes a lot for me to cry and to get mad, but I have been very, just, I'm over all of it, honestly. But I do think that since the public feels like they were not here to speak their piece because of the way that the amendment was taken out about St. George Island, I do feel like it would be in our best interest to do the right thing, and I'm one of five, to have another public hearing.
Sir, you want to have a public hearing to amend the ordinance we just passed to exclude St. George Island?
Yes, the way we did it. And I don't think we, Commissioner Amison can go back and change his, so that's not going to happen. So the only way to do it, I don't want to go through that again, but I feel like if the public was not here because they felt like St. George Island was excluded, then I do feel like the right thing to do would be to do whatever. So those people can come and have their say. That's my opinion.
Yes.
Before the commissioners make any, what I would call a rash decision this morning, I would recommend that you let staff confer with planning and Attorney Theriault and come back to you with a recommendation. If that's what you want to do, at that time, you could decide if you want to have a public hearing or not. But commissioners, I'm sorry, I've been pretty silent about this whole process. And I'm just going to give you my opinion. Like it or not, you throw it away. Tell me something, having another public hearing, and if the vote goes the same way where you include St. George Island, let's just say, will those people be pleased? Will they be satisfied? I'm sorry, I really tried to stay out of this, but it's getting to the point where you're being accused of financial gain for your family and your, how low can we go here? There has to be respect and trust that this board is doing what's best for the community. Let me ask a question. The amount of people that went here, let's do the math, was that even 1% of the total population of Franklin County? What about all the people that talked to you that don't want to come in here and have to deal with the flak that they get because they come and they stand against what most of the room is for? I'm sorry, commissioners, I need to step off the soapbox. But if people came to you respectfully and had a true conversation about what they're concerned, I'm good with that. I'm good with it if that solves it. But the accusations, no, I'm sorry. I'm the one in the background. I see how hard you guys, what work, what you put up with, what you do, all the people that call you, all the people that called me to call you, you know, the discussions that you have, I'm sorry. If we're going to sink and respond to bullying and threatening and accusing the public, the commissioners of being on the take just to get their way, you're the policymakers, I'm not. I'm your staff, I do what I'm told, but I'm sorry. But...
So I do think we need to have staff look at it and see what kind of recommendation they bring, and we can discuss this on the 20th.
That, I think, is the way, a positive way to move forward to, if that's what you want to do, your attorneys, your planning staff offer you an option to move, a couple of options in the way to move forward that you might want to do, and then the board decides. And if it comes to scheduling another public hearing in a specific manner for a specific item, that's what we follow.
Right, right, right. Ms. Sanders?
That is my recommendation. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Barbara Sanders, I won't take umbrage. I'm not a bully, and I don't say mean things about people, but I know you did get a bunch of flak. And I know, as Ms. Ward knows, that's what you put your face on the public record about. My problem with Mr. Maroon's suggestion is that you now have a PUD ordinance for some period of time. So tomorrow, or before staff has a chance to look everything over and before someone could submit a PUD for St. George Island. And I know there was the issues of maybe that can't happen. I don't see why it needs to be delayed. I think you should act today to invalidate the action from last Friday, and let's start over, because what Ms. Ward said is exactly the point. You're not going to stop the naysayers or the mean people and the Facebook, but you can then stand up tall, look yourself in the mirror and say, there were people who were not heard. Our job is to hear them. Let us do that. If the outcome is the same and I lose, then so be it. But that process is very, very important to your integrity and to transparency. I want to ask you to reject, Mr. Maroon's rather passionate, he puts up with a lot through his email in his office, and I get having hurt feelings, but that's not the point. Thanks.
All right. So I want to be clear in what you were asking, Commissioner. What you're asking is to have another public hearing for the sole fact of amending the ordinance we passed to exclude St. George Island. Is that what we're talking about?
No.
Okay, what are we talking about?
I'm just saying that apparently there were some public comments that they, because the original draft said St. George Island was removed initially, we added it during the hearing. People did not come to publicly comment on the ordinance because they saw the ordinance that was drafted that showed St. George Island excluded.
Right.
So those people didn't come and say their piece because they didn't feel like it affected them because St. George Island was removed.
Right.
So I feel like those people need to say their piece. Since we excluded St. George Island, they weren't here to say anything on their behalf because St. George Island was excluded in the original draft ordinance. We added it back, we took it out, you know, whenever we had the public hearing.
Let me ask you to make sure you understand what I'm saying. You want to have another public hearing to amend the ordinance we passed for the potential of removing St. George Island?
Commissioner?
Is that what you're talking about doing?
Commissioner, what they're saying may...
Yes.
David's not here, but I, the way I heard David's statement, the policy decision, if you want to reschedule the public hearing, it would be to reschedule a public hearing on your ordinance as it was adopted to exclude St. George Island, but you would go back, you'd start from scratch. You put a notice in the paper, you use that as the draft ordinance excluding St. George Island, along with the other, you know, additions and corrections that were made to the ordinance, and then you hold another public hearing. And it cures this procedural problem that people are complaining about.
And that's my point, Chairman. We're not, we're not ever going to hear the end of it until we do it.
I should say, the people are alleging goes away because you then would have started the process over from scratch.
One way or another.
My question is this, I hadn't, I can't say too much because I was the long no vote, right? So I can't say too much about this. But my thing is, it's not only St. George Island that's concerned about these PUDs, it's all across this county. So to go and exclude St. George Island specifically and not look at those areas of the other people, that's who we all represent too, and they've got concerns too. So, you know, that's my concern.
My only problem is, again, like I said, I'm going to say it again, I feel like we, some public people, people in the public that had a stake did not come because St. George Island was excluded in the original draft. And then during the public hearing, we excluded St. George Island and made Franklin County as a whole. And I feel like, again, as some of the people here publicly stated, they didn't get to say their piece because they thought it didn't affect them because St. George Island was out. And that's my point. Let's have those people come in and speak. Will it change the end of the game? Will it change any opinions or ideas? I don't know, but I feel like it's worth, again, I don't want to do it again, but I do feel like the public needs to be able to speak. That's my opinion. And I'm not going to make a motion, because that's not procedurally where we are right now, but it does need to be brought up at the next meeting so that we're procedurally in a position where we can decide on what to do.
Fine.
That's my only thoughts on that. I'm sorry, but that's how...
That's fine. It's no problem. What was interesting in the whole process to me, and Ms. Sanders alluded to it, was how we went through months of input on the document, but then we delayed it a month because Commissioner Sanders had health issues, waited till we had a full board here, and then a month before we're starting to hear it, now we're getting flooded with, we don't want them anywhere. That's we spent a year going through the process of drafting the language. So that was kind of interesting, that process, to me, to be honest with you. You know, the whole adage of give an inch, take a mile, but, you know, I'm fine with rehearing it. I'm fine with re-looking at it. I will say this, I stopped short of explaining what I did the other day, because I did make a post on social media, and I thought better of it, that shows the coastal construction law. What was it, Ms. Barbara?
Coastal high hazard.
High hazard law. So according to our planner, with the PUD ordinance we passed, the property would first have to meet the future land use map, or it had to have amendment to the future land use map. It also would have to be in the coastal high hazard area. If they're doing residential, they can only have one per acre. Doesn't matter if they have a PUD or not. That's all it gets, one per acre. So it might not even apply to St. George Island. It might be impossible to put a future PUD there. I'm fine with rehearing it. That's not a problem. Those are things that we learned during the meeting. Yes, sir?
As far as procedure goes, I mean, again, it's the board policy. If you want to wait to the 20th, that's fine, but if you want to make a motion today, I don't think that's procedurally incorrect either. That's just a policy decision for you to automate. Because all you're doing is authorizing the scheduling of a public hearing, as David had said, to basically rehear based on the ordinance as it was adopted on July 25th.
Right.
So it's up to the board. You can do it now, or you can do it on the 20th.
If it's not procedurally unsound to do, I'll make a motion to re-advertise, to re-have a public hearing on the PUD ordinance to the way it was presented at the public hearing.
I'm not sure...
To exclude, to exclude St. George, the whole county essentially.
Okay. Okay, so take out public hearing on the ordinance as it was adopted, which excludes St. George Island.
Yes, yes.
All right. So do you have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Ward?
I need you to clarify the motion.
So when we had the original draft ordinance, and let me pull it up, just so that I'm correct, because I just had it on here, let's see. So in the original ordinance, the one that was advertised in the paper stated, just give me a minute, let me get it on here, said, as of April 11th, 2025, no new PUDs shall be allowed on St. George Island. Okay? We, at the public hearing, this was what was advertised, correct?
That was the draft, yes.
That was advertised, okay. When we had our public hearing, a couple Fridays ago, you at the beginning of the meeting said we're going to exclude St. George, in other words, take it all out. So in other words, the whole county...
Yes.
Have PUDs.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Amison made the motion. I don't remember who seconded it, but it was, Commissioner Sanders opposed, so it was a four-one vote.
Correct.
The, what I want to have is a new hearing that takes H, I think it's H on the ordinance that was advertised, I want it to basically have, it needs to be eliminated. So what was, what we adopted and what we voted on at the hearing is what we need to have the hearing on.
Oh, so...
Is that making sense?
That's what David Theriault was suggesting, is your policy decision. In order for there to be clarity, the board could do two things. You could direct me today to publish a notice to conduct another public hearing, and the draft ordinance for that public hearing would be as you adopted it on July 25th. Because you remember, you exclude St. George Island, you added in some language clarifying the 47-foot height maximum from the pre-development grade. There was a change to the citation. There was an error, it should have said, I think, section 425, and it said 420 or something like that.
For sure.
And then there were some dates that were changed as well. So that's what you adopted. So for my purposes, if you tell me today to schedule a public hearing, I'm going to use as the draft of that public hearing, the ordinance as you adopted it on July 25th.
Yes, that's what I want.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Are we to the second before? Because I don't think, that's what Mrs. Sanders was talking about, but are we?
Well...
That's her motion.
Yeah, I hear you.
But my thing is, I want to second her motion and take it and bring it back to the people. But can I do that with me being the long vote? No.
Of course.
Okay, so I second your motion. Bring it back to the people.
We do have a second. Any future, more discussion?
Commissioner Krug, because I'm like you, I just want clarification. So where we're, what we're advertising is what we ended with, what we voted on, not what was presented, not what was originally advertised. That's what I want to make sure.
Yes, because...
I want to be very clear that public understands what we're doing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's the whole point.
All right. If there's no more board discussion, I'm going to call for public comment, because we do have some that, that's the way they fill the card out.
And Ms. Klaus, she has her hand.
Sanders?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I don't have an objection to that idea, the motion. I just did want to say, again, I'm worried about the gap between the 25th and whenever you decide, what you decide, if it's the same, it won't matter, but if you change it, it would matter. I did want to point out one thing. After that meeting, and I did start doing my research, there, we really do not have a coastal high hazard zone map. The one with the red line was created by the Regional Planning Council. It's not really, and what they did was took your flood maps and colored it red. I just want to be sure, if someone asks you for your coastal high hazard zone map, it doesn't exist in my, I don't believe.
Well, we'll make sure that gets included, because that's actually federal that's passed through the state to us.
Sure. And it's just, they created it based on other maps, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Goodson?
To the extent that the comments or the concerns about personal attacks against commissioners was related to my comments, that was not my intention. I think procedure is important, and I know you all do too, and these statutes exist so that the policies that you all pass can be beyond reproach. And I think that's important. I know that you all personally value your reputations in this community very deeply, and whether folks are going to be happy with the outcome of a second hearing is not really the point. The point is sticking to the rules, going through the process, so that when it all flushes out, everyone knows that this was done transparently, that their voices were heard, that you all listened to them, and that you all are going to do what it takes to reflect the values of your constituents.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, ma'am. Well, Ms. Goodson, it wasn't, I'll be honest with you, it wasn't about anything you said this morning. As an ordained bishop of the Church of God since nineteen ninety-eight, I, I definitely value my reputation. And there was way more said online than you ever even thought to mention this morning, I can assure you.
Well.
And just for everybody's knowledge, my, my house got hit by lightning, so I didn't have no internet or wifi, so I don't know what was said. So it don't matter, you know?
Well, I thank you for your vote anyway, Ms. Sanders.
We still work as a board.
Yeah, Ms. Klaus.
Ms. Carlin's got her hand raised. Do you mind letting her speak to him?
I just wanted to understand why it is that we cannot have a motion to reconsider, or a motion to rescind, or a motion to repeal. Because those are all legal motions that Otis could make if he so chooses to change his original motion. And I don't know why it wouldn't apply. So if you could explain it to me, because I'd appreciate it.
So that, that was taken care of in that meeting with a motion and vote of the board and finalized?
Right. But a motion to reconsider allows previously decided matters to be brought back up for a discussion with a new vote. Typically happens in the next scheduled meeting.
That might be true if we use Robert's Rules of Order, ma'am, but we do not.
I also have one more small comment. Um, if, just that, um, we often talk about Saint George Island and people want to know why Saint George Island is special, and we don't want to exclude Saint George Island because it's special. But we recognize it's special. We, as a commission, recognize it's special so much, we're having a discussion about making it a special district. So that is why it's special. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mason, did you have anything?
Ms. Carlin keeps raising her hand.
Come on, Ms. Brenda. We don't typically do that. You usually need to fill it out before, come on, you're good, come on, Ms. Brenda, come on. Because of some of your matter, I'll allow it.
And Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, I kind of told somebody online already that we couldn't, they couldn't speak because of Sunday night twelve.
I have a speaker card.
Yes, ma'am, it should be filled out before the meeting. It says at the top of the card, but go ahead.
Followed you. Hi, Brenda Carlin, uh, Saint George Island. I really wasn't gonna say anything, but I just need clarification. Uh, the reason why I think, um, people may have not shown up last time is because there may need clarification that what you put forth wasn't a draft. I interpreted what you put forth, even though I participated, that it was final, the final wording that you were gonna vote on. So when it said, um, Saint George Island was excluded, I actually thought you did hear from the people and put it in the ordinance that you were going to approve or not. So now I had, when the change came, it was a total shock. And, um, so now I'm confused as to what another, uh, public work, uh, a, a, a public hearing would do. So you hear more people that are saying, we don't want Saint George Island, but how, what are you all gonna do with that? Your, is that gonna change anything from what you did before?
Well, that's what we're talking about, having a public hearing for, Ms. Brenda.
What, I mean, the public, in anticipation that the public hearing is going to bring forth the people that you maybe heard from online or whoever who thought wasn't, uh, SGI was excluded before, they're gonna come and say, we want you to exclude SGI. Are you gonna be able to do it then?
That's what we're talking about advertising for, yes, ma'am.
So you would have the ability to do that, change that ordinance then?
At a public hearing, the board can make a motion to vote to do either or. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Like, thank you for the clarity.
Okay.
Here's my card. Do you want my card?
No, no, you're good.
Um, uh, Ms. Debbie Walsh, I think I told you earlier that you could not speak, but the chairman has changed the policy for this me, for this particular item in the meeting. Would you still like to speak? If you would, please raise your hand on your device. She has not raised. I'm gonna see if I hit allow to talk, Commissioner, if she would like to, if she unmutes. She did not unmute, Mr. Chairman. Oh, no, she just raised. God, here we go. She just raised her hand again. Hold on. I apologize. Okay, Ms. Walsh.
Yes. I'm sorry. I was trying to figure that out. Um, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, I, I agree with, uh, most of the speakers that have already spoken, so I don't want to take too much of your time. Uh, I do appreciate the work that your board has done. But I think that also I want to just make a comment in terms of the community understanding and knowing what processes you are taking at your board in other areas of the world, I, that I've come from before. When there are gonna be zoning changes of such great, such enormity to someone's life in terms of what the look and feel of the community will look like, there usually is not only a public newspaper or publication that goes out to the community, but also anyone within two hundred feet of a possible proposal should have been notified by a certified mailing. That, that I don't think was done. I do believe that the, our entire county is a beautiful, very special county, and I certainly think that Saint George Island is exceptional. And we would all love to see it preserved in a very special way. But I also think for the rest of the county, that goes the same way. That, I understand you want to give more options to developers to, you know, develop the land in, in a more commercial way. But you're imposing many of the residents, when you do that, in such a sweeping, open, you know, it, that it touches everyone, to make an ordinance that is touching the entire county. It's, I think, you're opening the door for overdevelopment and, and just blight that maybe you will reconsider after the fact. To give developers such a open door is, I think, very, it, it, it's, it's not a very spec, a way to teach us to treat a special area as ours. If you could just look at the county next to us, cap, which is Gulf County, which actually we lived in and moved out of and came here because of the more rural and very untouched way that you have preserved the land. And to see what they have done after Michael, when the developers came in and just basically cut down trees at, at will. And no thought to infrastructure, no thought to the people who live there. And I just would hate to see the same results because they did the same thing. They made a sweeping zoning change. Mind you, during COVID, where there was no public hearings, no public input, and no people who were invited to meetings to be part of the process. And I'm not saying you're doing that, so don't misunderstand me. I'm just saying that the results, if you just write across over to Saint, to, uh, to Port Saint Joe, which is also a very charming, beautiful, little old town, has changed dramatically because of that sweeping change of zoning that was done without anyone having any input. And, and I do appreciate that you guys are reconsidering the input. But I also have to wonder if you, if you really believe that every single person maybe read that paper that was going out. Because I personally, I did not. I did not know that this proposal was even up for a vote. And it wasn't for the fact that, I know you mentioned something about people on Facebook. Uh, if that would, that's the only reason I found out. So it's another public way possibly that maybe you guys should think of in, in, in the future. And I think it would be also a way for you to have a better rapport with your constituents. And perhaps it would bring more dialogue that can happen before a meeting, opposed to having people come out and then feel very, that you're attacked or they're attacked. I don't think anyone means to have any of that, but this is, this is our life. Just as you live here, we do too. And we feel that perhaps it's a little bit of a disrespect. And I, and I kind of don't understand why one of your staff people goes up to a mic and, and says something against the community. I understand they work for you, but that's out of place for them. They should not be doing that, in my opinion. I think that we are the, we deserve a voice. We're, you're only there because we gave you that seat. So for you to cut us out of the process is inappropriate. And I don't think anyone wants to look like Panama City Beach, although it's beautiful and it has a wonderful purpose. This is not the area that we want to look like that. And I think that you should perhaps just think about that. And I think the PUD would, I, I would hate to see anything like that on the island because I think the island is an, an amazing place. But I also think the rest of the county is an amazing place. It's a beautiful county. And to, to think that you would just make such a sweeping zoning change without any thought because of developers that come in and, and, you know, give all these wonderful things they want to do, but is it really wonderful? And who is it wonderful for? Is it for us? Is it for the developer? And that's what we have to think about. Because once you do that, you can't go back. And that's one of the things I think you have to think about is you cannot go back once you rip it all down.
Anything else, Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, I, no, I just, I do, I do wish that you, you do put this up for a vote and that you open it up for a more, give more information to some people that don't all read, you, you only have, uh, like, one local paper, one publication. Usually it has to be three. Usually anyone within two hundred feet has to be notified. That's my only, my only, uh, objection to you, you're acting as if we all knew about this, which, again, I, I try to stay involved and, and not, you know, stay what's going on top, stay on top of what's going on. But I, I had no idea until it was on Facebook, and I, I don't want to take too much of your time. But I do, I just, you know, um, I thank you for your work. And, uh, you know, we just, we just hope that you take the community voice into consideration.
Yes, ma'am. And I would, I would communicate to you, though. So what we talked about was what the PUD ordinance was, a zoning change? It was not about any one project. That's kind of been confused the whole time. That's been, the sky is falling.
Okay.
That's been part of the diatribe. It was only ever about a zoning change.
Right, but you were saying a, a zoning change to the entire, just, the entire county.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Well, we have a motion and vote to, to have another public hearing, Ms. Walsh.
Thanks.
And then, and, and we'll continue this year-long process.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Mr. Chairman, before we take a vote, can I, can I, um, clear it up in my own mind myself?
Yep.
Okay, so we took a vote on the PUD and it excluded, I mean, it included Saint George Island. So the PUD is in effect.
Yes.
So basically what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a public hearing to talk about excluding. What is, what is it, you want?
We're just gonna just have a PUD on the whole thing altogether. Because people in the, in the pub, what we, what was adopted, that's what. And in, in that public hearing, just like it was changed during the public hearing, we are allowed to, that's what a public hearing's for, correct me if I'm wrong, is to discuss things and vote on things and, and, but again, what was drafted was not what was presented. And I feel like it's, again, the public input is important. Can we change it? Yeah, we can.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to get clear in my mind because some people's gonna think, well, they're just talking about the Saint George Island part of it.
No.
But it's the whole thing. Because I can tell you right now, uh, my, part of my problem of not voting for it and that was the amount of the acreage, like the five acres or something, I felt like it needed to be a bigger, a bigger thing to where you'd have more of a thing. But anyway, we'll discuss that during the thing. I just want to get that clear because I don't want people to think, well, the ordinance is there and we're not gonna talk about nothing but it's Saint George Island. You're gonna be talking about the whole ordinance. As a whole.
Yep. So, so, yeah.
Basically, you're taking it back for a vote. You're taking it back for a vote, is what you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There.
My question's this. Say we get to the next public hearing. One of the commissioners decides to amend again, as I amended, to say ten acres or twenty acres, or to include Dog Island, or I'm just throwing hypotheticals, now are we gonna have to go back, re-advertise again, and then have another hearing? Do we violate sunshine law then?
That's my question.
I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna get work done.
Yeah, that's true.
If we keep bouncing and bouncing. Because I don't think we can make everybody happy. I've only been here two years and I've tried, but I'm starting to think that's impossible. And I don't easily give up, and I'm about to.
What?
But, but I'm just saying, and, and I'm not trying to be that thorn, but how are we gonna get stuff done? Um, I just don't see how we're gonna get business done. I mean.
Mr. Chairman, to follow, Commissioner Amerson, if, if we do the opposite, so we're advertising on what we accepted, which included the entire county, suppose the commissioner on this board says, well, I want to exclude Saint George Island now. I want, because there was a lady from Allegator Point that spoke, you want to exclude Allegator Point, you do that during the public hearing. Do we have to then stop and re-advertise again and do another one? Because it's not the total opposite of what we're talking about now, but the same rules apply?
Uh, and I, and I see your point, Mr. Chairman, I see your point. But, but, but the issue is, I probably just need to shut up, is what I probably need to do. Because I'm probably gonna say something I'm gonna regret later, but, but I agree. It's, you know, how, what, for, what can be changed, what can't be changed, or is it, it, I do agree with Commissioner Amerson. They, if we do change it, then does that mean we need to do another public hearing? I think people's perception of public hearings, I think the biggest thing is at the end of the day, we're not gonna make everybody happy, period, no matter what decision we make. If we don't have the public hearing to re, to address the public comments, the people that weren't here, that's, we're still gonna never hear the end of that. We have the public hearing, hypothetically passes again, or whatever the case may be, they're still not gonna be happy about that. They're still not gonna be happy about how we advertise, which we advertise by Florida statute. So, um, I just feel like there was discussion about the public not being able to say their piece. I feel like voices need to be heard, so that way nobody can ever say, well, they don't listen to me, they don't listen to my concerns, they don't care what I think, they are constituents, they are citizens. We do owe them that opportunity. Can we change it? I, I don't, I, I think we're overthinking it here and overanalyzing it, but I see we do have to overanalyze it because that's why we're here today, is it's been overanalyzed and to, to no end, but I, I don't know. I don't know.
Chairman, I want to ask you a question. Any public hearing we do for anything on an ordinance is what's published the final draft of that potential ordinance?
Draft? Yes.
It's not the final ordinance. The final ordinance is done by adoption by the board, correct?
Right.
So up until the time that the board votes in a public hearing, everything that's being considered as a draft, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
I think yes, because as, as you heard from the, uh, David Theriak under the Newmont case, uh, whenever you publish a, um, a notice for a, a public hearing to adopt an ordinance like was done with the PUD ordinance, there's a, um, basically a, a final ordinance that is put in the notice of intent book over at the clerk of courts office.
Right.
That's, that's the publication of the final version, but changes can be made during the enacting process as long as they are consistent with the general purpose of the ordinance, and that's what David Theriak was telling you here this morning.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to ask. Yes, ma'am.
I think the authorities.
Ma'am, please come to the podium. We're gonna do it, we're gonna do it the right way.
Allison Goodson again. I think the authorities that would guide you in, in analyzing what kind of amendments are appropriate to be made, quote unquote, at the last second and what aren't, are in that memorandum. that memorandum. And it is changes that are substantial and material that cannot be, that will require a new notice and a new hearing, but changes that do not alter the purpose of the ordinance, such as by reversing a ban on PUDs in one particular area, can be made during the hearing. And I think one example of that that you all came up with during the hearing that made a lot of sense was there's confusion about this 47-foot height requirement. Can we add language to this ordinance that wasn't in the originally published version to make that apparent and clear? I think yes, that's the type of change that's not substantial and material. It's to clarify what you already intended in the ordinance. But when you have a protection in the ordinance that the public is relying on in coming to you and telling you what their thoughts are on an ordinance, and then that protection gets pulled out, that becomes substantive. And so it's case by case, it's not, there's not a strict formula for you all to, to go by. I wish I could give you one, but I think the guiding principles that should, that should help you to analyze those types of questions are in the memorandum.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep. Ms. Sanders, come to the podium.
Um, Attorney Schuler.
Yes, ma'am.
When we advertise these public hearings, can we add, I know I've seen what it's noticed, I've seen the verbiage, can we put in that verbiage, just to, to save face here, be aware, public, this ordinance is draft, it is a potential for changes based on the board in the public hearing, i- is that something we could add?
I wouldn't recommend doing that. Let's, let's stick with the, the tried and true notice that we've been using. I, I, adding, injecting new language, it's hard to predict how people are gonna react to that, how it's going to be interpreted. The notices that are published follow a, a, a longstanding format that provides the legally required information. I wouldn't recommend changing that.
Okay.
Ms. Sanders?
Barbara Sanders, um, to answer Mr. Amison's question, that's what the court talks about in this, in that Supreme Court case, a loop. You know, you change an and, you change a but, at some point, you're never getting work done because you can't ever change anything or if you change something. So that, the point is what is material? What is important? So you change the citation to the, um, it was just a typo, that's not material, that's not important. But you've got to remember where you were, the posture you were in when you were considering this ordinance, which was your 2018-04 ordinance, that says specifically, plan unit developments shall not be allowed in Franklin County, Florida. So that was the baseline. So now we have a proposed ordinance that's published and it says to me, that prohibition of 2018-04 is gonna stay in place for St. George Island, which is one of your critical environmental areas. Personally, I think it should be Dog and Alligator Point, but once again, um, so the question is what is material? What did I read that said, oh, okay, I don't need to come talk? And that's what Ms. Ward's talking about. Did you unintentionally, um, change, well, or did you, did you not get people notice? All right? So I would say that's the answer to your question. Now what Ms. Sanders is talking about is you could change the acreage because you're gonna rehear the whole ordinance. You could decide after the next public hearings to go back to your 2018-04. You should, you could choose not to adopt PUDs again and go back to this, and then this would be effective, that there's prohibitions. You're gonna listen with an open mind, you're gonna listen to people. So there's procedure problems, there's the micro dot of the five acre problem, there's the barrier islands, coastal area problem. So I think it's worth your while, not just window dressing, but it's worth your while to hear your constituents again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we do have a motion in a second. Oh, go ahead.
I think Barbara just said what I was gonna say, but the answer, I was gonna try to answer Commissioner Amison's question too, which is, it's what is a substantial and material change and what feels like a substantial and material change. Currently, no PUDs are allowed, we're gonna allow PUDs. If you change in the wording to make it a little harder, to be more restrictive, to be more like what we're used to, I don't think that's necessarily a material change from what we, what we have right now and what you published. But adding a chunk of critically endangered land that we were told from the middle of these procedures on, from when it was in PNZ back, is a material substantive change. And you did not just put, put the name of the ordinance out there, you put the wording and it was a draft and I know that, but I do think it's worth discussing. I also think it's worth discussing to look up parliamentary procedure because that's what I did just now, and I think you could rescind or revisit Amison's motion. So I think it's maybe worth looking up in Florida parliamentary procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claus. Any other discussion from the board before we vote? We do have a motion in a second. All right. All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
No.
Pass is 3-2. Let's take a ten, a five-minute recess.
Franklin County is now back in session. Mr. Howard Neighbors, you're up next on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, as he come, I need to say more than one thing, please. As far as being transparent, I don't know how much transparent I can be. Because, you know, I'm big on my ethics, I'm big on integrity. And when it is, when me and my family is attacked with false stuff, it is, I do take it personal as well. But I've been, I've been in public service for, working my 20th year, so I know how it is. And to this board, we are not going to be, we can't please everyone. People is gonna say stuff. But at the same time, I do believe in doing the right thing. So, and when I know I'm doing the right thing, no one can take that from me. But just had to say that, let the public know, the people that really know me, know where I stand. People that don't know me, you will find out who I am, but that's where I stand.
And Mr. Chairman, while we got an engaged audience, I just want everybody to know that next Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday at 8:30 up in Havana, we're having FWC meeting with the FWC Commissioners about oysters. So, I just want to throw that out there. I hope everybody that's here in the room and listening today meets us up there for that meeting as well. Because that's also a very important topic and subject in our county right now.
How about getting the bay open?
And also, the day before, the bears.
Yes.
The bears.
That's a big topic, too.
All right. Mr. Howard?
Good morning, Commissioner. I just got a couple of action items. Number one is the flood in Atlanta, which I'm sure y'all aware of that, on Kentucky and Delaware, and a little bit on Georgia Street. And the people flood bad, and a lot of water runs off St. Joe's property land on Toome. And we talked to Mr. Tim, I think it was, yeah, Mr. Tim, last year from St. Joe. And Commissioner Sanders was there, and the engineer was there, and said that the people would go in and try to solve that problem by blocking it off and maybe rerouting it. But I called them this year, and they said that they, they wasn't gonna deal with it. So, I'm here, maybe we could send them, St. Joe Paper Camp, St. Joe Paper Company a letter to try, try to get them to turn that water off or block it off or do something. Because you get that rain and all, it floods them people. So.
Mr. Goodson?
Thank you, Howard, for bringing this up. This is something that has been a problem for a while. It kinda like got worse after I retired in 2018. And now I came back in 2022, and it started getting worse. It looks like St. Joe Timberlands has, has timbered the timber out in that area down there, and maybe messed up the natural drain. What I, you know, what myself and Howard and the engineer was talking about is if we could get St. Joe to reroute that water back toward Duval Road, the ditches on the Duval Road would be able to take care of the, you know, the water that comes down. That's one thing. There's a couple of things gonna have to fix the problem, but that would help for right now. And I'd like to have a, a letter written, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, that we have a letter written to Tim Stur's boss with the Woodland Division for St. Joe Company. I've got to find out his name, or Michael, you can research it, find it out. And just write a letter and ask them if they would help us, and that's the way we do. Would they support us? That's what we need to do. Would they, would they support us in trying to eliminate this problem out there? And that we're willing to do whatever we have to do to, to do what, what we need to do as a county.
So we do have a motion to approve that letter. We have a second from Commissioner Ward. Ms. Goodson and Ms. Sanders, the rest of the meeting, if you want to comment on that, then please just raise your hand. Otherwise, I'll have to call you every time, is that okay? All right. Now, I would ask, under discussion, though, Commissioner, if any of, if any of us on the commission have any contacts with St. Joe's, is it okay for us to call and try to do the same thing, get the same thing done?
I've done it, I've done it, and I've, I've met, I've caught all my contacts. They don't, they don't, in other words, they don't want to claim responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, I know you are engaged with Representative Shoef on some collateral issues. I would like if you and I could take advantage of that relationship, too, and see if we can get something done.
All we need is a clear, a clear of what we're doing. Because if it's definitely known from them, then we need to find out what we can do to actually.
On our end?
Yeah, and I think right now, that, that's expensive remedy right now. But now, in the future, it is on the five-year work plan for 2030 to get, to get, like, trying to find a $5 million grant to be able to reroute the other part, the other side of it toward Delaware Street and Oak Street. But we've got to do something, because with these rains coming like they're coming, it's way down now in that pond that Mr. Steve Ketchin's has, where he lives next to it. But it won't take long to fill that thing up if it keeps on raining like it's doing.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want the people to know that we're trying to do something about it.
Yes, ma'am. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Go ahead, Mr. Howard.
Yeah, last year, all them people's house flooded, I mean, had a couple put of water in their house. And what it is, that water is landlocked, it can't get out. There's no ditches or no drainage in that area, so.
It's also depressed, depressed area, isn't it?
Yes, sir. It is. But I think, if I ain't mistaken, in the past, maybe 20, 15 years or so, I think they flooded about three different times in the past 15 years. So, just when you get them big rains and all, it builds up and can't get out, so. And I also got another one, which I ain't got on my board report, Commissioner, is the railroad ditches, which I've got up with Otis on it, and we've talked about it. But them ditches is also creating a lot of flooding back through Half Cop, Peachtree Road, and all, and the Bluff Road area.
Right.
Paradise Lane, but we dug some intersections of it out yesterday, but they, they just packed full of trees, and, and they hadn't been dug or maintained in years. So, I don't know, maybe we could write them a letter, or.
About maintaining the ditches?
Yeah, try to dig them ditches out, yes, sir. Need to be dug out from, from Tilton Road all the way to the Bluff Road. The railroad's got big ditches through there, it used to keep all that rain and dry.
Okay.
But through the years, they just, they let it go, and it's just built all up.
All right.
Same call, Mr. Chairman, if we could get Representative Shoef to get a contact, and then we just, I prefer to call, Commissioner Amison. Mr. Howard, I prefer to call and talk to somebody before, use the letters as backup after we have a conversation with somebody, you know, at that organization, at the railroad.
Well, if we're just gonna do a call, do we need a motion to vote, or we just do staff direction?
No, just, just direction. I'll follow the same thing as we're doing for the, for Kentucky Avenue up in there.
And we can still keep our motion second, vote on the request from the letter?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
We've already voted on the letter, yes, sir.
Do we need a motion to, for this letter?
Well, do y'all wanna, do y'all wanna try to make some contact first and see if we can find out, or do you wanna go and write a letter? Or a letter just?
If memory serves us, Board correct, this is a discussion we've had for the last couple of years. And we've made a lot of phone calls and a lot of contacts, but.
You want to include it in the letter?
We'll, we'll, we'll throw this one more time, but let's, let's try to make that contact within the next, between now and the next meeting.
Decide in a letter.
Because I'd be more than willing to have some action then if we don't get any response.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, too, a letter is on the record at that point, but, yeah.
So, Mr. Howard, it sounds like we're gonna try to make some conversation. And if, and if for some reason that doesn't show any sign of being fruitful, and now on the 20th, we'll add it on our next agenda to be able to write that letter.
Okay, and what it is, all that water drains from back that way, and runs all the way to the Bluff Road, goes under the Bluff Road, runs to the river. So, it just, everything's blocked up through there.
All right.
And I got one more action item, McKenzie Wilson, which is a truck driver. I would like, board approval moving him from number one to a number two truck driver.
So move.
So, we have a motion to approve, Commissioner Ward, it's been seconded by Commissioner Creem and Commissioner Amison. Any discussion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I will ask, Mr. Howard, did you discuss this with Aaron?
I did.
Okay, okay.
I, I best bring it up after the budget.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Anyone else? Mr. Howard?
And that's all I got for y'all, Commissioner.
Well, I did notice that the calendar is starting to look a lot better. Double-digit numbers look a lot better than single-digit numbers.
Yes, sir.
Especially this time of year.
Yeah. That's probably really helped with what you guys have to try to keep up with during the summertime when everything's growing like crazy.
Which we getting, you know, like the opponent, we got 16.
Yeah.
And hoping in the future, we, they talking about adding another crew. So, if we do, I'm gonna have to have a truck, so if that happens, I'll be back for the board to, to see what we can do to.
Yeah, that's a good thing, that's a good thing for the county and the residents of the county.
Yes, sir. And it looks a lot different between this year and last year, so.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have something, a couple of things from Mr. Howard. One is, if you notice, FDOT's been mowing the grass along Highway 98 throughout the whole county.
And weed eating the ditches.
Uh-huh.
And weed eating the ditches, yeah.
So, they're, they're doing a lot better with that. I know we had a discussion about that last year. I got in touch with Weber's, I guess, supervisor, and he assured me they would do better, and trying, and they, and they have, so.
Yeah.
Another thing, I want to make sure that you and anybody out there working in this heat are staying hydrated, because we've been seeing a lot of heat-related illnesses. And I just want to make sure that, you know, your guys, Parks and Rec guys, you, you, everybody that's out there working stays hydrated, and you have what you need to keep them hydrated. So, I just wanna throw that out there. And then, another thing, I noticed you guys have a new emblem. It looks pretty good. I don't know who was responsible for making that. Maybe Miss Virginia?
We haven't, I think mosquito controls got theirs out, but we haven't got ours out, yeah. We just made, yeah, Virginia did. She did a good job on it.
Looks good. Both, I, I did notice yours is mosquito control. And I kept seeing some weird trucks. I'm like, what is that truck? And it's the mosquito control emblem, so, thank y'all.
Take our trucks, and I don't know, we're gonna put numbers on the tailgates also. Where somebody that got a problem or issue calling in on a truck, they can give us that number off of it, so, that way we know who it is.
Mr. Howard, we talked about those numbers yesterday, and you referred to putting them on the tailgate. If we can, let's also put them on the front quarter panel on either side.
Okay.
That way, if they're seen from the side, they can still see the number.
Yep, we do that.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Since we're talking about Weber and Florida DOT and all that, Howard, we've got some issues between Lombardi, or the Maritime Museum going back towards St. Joe, primarily right there around Jewel Road, that area. There's some dead pine trees. I've, I've mentioned it in the past. I don't know if that's on Desert Red's property, or if it's, it looks like it's within the state right away. But that's, that's a, that's an accident waiting to happen. I mean, we're talking about full mature, dead pine trees. Is there anybody that you can, if, if you could, put eyes on it yourself, or I'll go with you?
I, I will, and I can get up with maybe Ray or one of them that's over the state and see. You know, if they think it's on their property, then we'll probably have to either call Desert Ray or either send them a letter, too, so, try to take care of the trees.
I mean, they're, if, if you see them, you'll see what I'm talking about. They, when they fall, they're gonna go straight across the highway, and hopefully nobody's driving at the time, or whatnot. But if one good storm, then.
Oh, yeah, it'll be in the middle of the road to begin with. We also got some that, she brought to my attention, too, on Brownfield. Just give me right where the spoil site's at. We got a bunch of dead pine trees right on the edge of the road through there, too, so, which that's on the county property, so we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Howard, thank y'all for everything you do.
Thank y'all, Commissioner.
Yep. Commissioners, Mr. Fonda Davis turned in a report, but there is nothing on his report that was, there's no action items?
No action items, sir.
He's not here attending via Zoom or anything, is he? I didn't think he was.
No, he's not, from what I can see.
So, if you have any questions, you can contact Mr. Davis directly.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, though, even though he's not here, I do want to commend them, because we had an issue at Wayside Park in Carabelle where somebody, I don't know if it was vandalized or broke on purpose, but a concrete seat of the bench was damaged, and concrete was everywhere. And they went out and fixed it themselves. We didn't have to hire a contractor or nothing. Corey went out and warmed it up and fixed it, so, he sent me pictures, it looks good. And then also, they, they put, took a new bear-proof garbage can out to Alligator Point. So, I just want to thank them for that.
All right. Ms. Jennifer Daniels?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have zero action items, but I did turn in a, a multi-year report that we're going to start doing every year. It'll be annual after this. Just wanted to kind of cover in it on this first one, everything we've done since I took over as Director, and wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions, or we put it out so we could make sure that you're all aware of where we're spending the county's money, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
You go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, I did read the report, and it is very, very good, it's short, sweet, to the point. And again, we use the word transparent all the time. It's very transparent, and it gives that transparency to our community and to us as Commissioners, so we know what's, which we know, you know, what you guys do every day. But it does help with the community and what you guys do, so thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Ms. Director Daniels, I did read the report, too, very detailed, and straight to the point. Good job on the report. I will be getting up with you in reference to an emergency plan here in the near future.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Daniels, this is the kind of document I was mentioning to the board, maybe a year or so ago. We were talking about coming up with a strategic plan, but this is showing what has been done. The strategic plan would show how we plan on spending the money in the future. But this is a well-put-together document. I notice you still don't know what date that truck is, but it's all good.
I know, yes. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Ms. Daniels?
And if anyone wants a copy of it, it's on the agenda. There's a link to download it. But if anyone wants a paper copy, they can just email me or your office.
And it's, it's also on our website, too, and our Facebook, and all of our other social media. Yes, sir.
Job well done. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you.
Mr. Polus? I don't think there was anything.
No action items?
No action items on his agenda. So, Commissioners, if you have any questions for Director Polus, you can contact him outside the meeting.
Mosquito cars are up, though.
Is Mr. Levstrand available?
He had no action items either, sir.
All right. Same thing for Mr. Levstrand, Ms. Roundtree?
Again, no action items, sir.
Okay. And Mr. Kersenbaum, you're up next.
Steve Kersenbaum, Airport Manager. Commissioners, just quick informational thing, the runway remark thing that's on the Fiscal Managers' Report that's coming up, just letting you know that's to make us compliant with the FDOT inspection for this year. And also, it's not noted there, but the company's not just cleaning where the markings are and remarking the airport. They're cleaning 4 million square feet of pavement at the airport that's caked with mold. So, there's a lot of work that they're gonna be doing there. And they should be starting with your go-ahead today. They should be starting sometime in August. My action items, spoke to the Commission last time I was up here, that we wanted to set up a coordinated grant process to try to get capital improvements done at the airport without any county expenditure. And we had a couple preliminary meetings, but anyhow, the Airport Board agreed with it that. it that try to push everything together into a package, speaking with Team Franklin, speaking with the APRCA, speaking with FDOT, FAA, but having AVCON at the lead, putting this together to file for grants that are gonna come back to you and the Fiscal Manager. And we'd just like to get an okay to start initiating that process, and every Commission meeting will bring forward what we have to go to you guys.
Okay. I have a question. When we, when we start to apply for a grant, and I'm good with applying for grants, we do that frequently, that's the way we try to keep from charging our residents even more in taxes, by using that offset of grant funds. But AVCON taking the lead, is there, how does that look monetarily? Is that, I mean, how, I'm sure they're gonna be paid for putting the grant together, or is it?
Yeah, he'll actually put the grant together in conjunction with Opportunity Florida helping, with the ARPC helping, and Team Franklin helping a little bit, but it'll all go back to Aaron for review before it even comes to the Commission.
Okay.
To discuss it. What we're trying to do is get some more work done without inundating the Fiscal Manager with stuff, just have her look at it and say, I like this.
Okay, that helps.
Are you asking who will pay for AVCON's work? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that's what I was asking, but he just clarified it.
Okay.
So, it sounds like what you're asking the Board to consider today is allowing potential grants that come up, say, hey, look, we want to apply for this one, it comes back and we vote on it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any groundwork, you have a, you know, AVCON usually collects their money based on admin that's built into most FDOT, FAA grants. You have a separate agreement with AVCON that if there is no admin money, they charge you, there's hourly rate, I have to go look at it and see, they charge you for doing the groundwork and putting the grant together.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's what basically.
So, it's already been covered?
So, yes.
Should be capped on that as well.
Yes, there is. So, if we get close to that cap, I come back to the Board to extend, you know, to increase that cap so that they can do the work of whatever grant you guys are looking at.
Yeah, okay. So, pleasure the Board on this?
So move.
All right. So, I do a motion to approve to use this process where everything's still gonna go through the Fiscal Manager and come back for Commission approval as we pursue grants, using AVCON. And we do have a second. Commissioner Amison made the motion, Commissioner Crewman seconded the motion. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? That's unanimous. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, that's terrific. And George made a comment with me at a meeting I had with him earlier last week. He said, you know what, Steve? He said, you're swinging for the fences. He goes, we need some singles and doubles. And he said, we got a great general aviation airport, so as a Board, they sat down and we discussed about different projects that we'd like to move forward in the future and make priority at the airport. And they said, why don't you continue swinging for the fences, but in the interim, make this the best general aviation airport in the region? And biggest thing we're missing is, well, number one, the hangar complex that's on the table, but an airport terminal building, something where meetings could be held, Airport Manager could have an office, a future restaurant, but something that makes the airport a destination. And they'd like to see that we try to get something like that funded, and then we were talking a couple of corporate hangars, and continue forward on the runway extension to try to get Florida Commerce to help us with that, because they helped us with the environmental review, which has been completed. And so, basically, those are a few things that we're looking to make as priority projects. Action items, the development at the airport, we can't put a handle on what we want to put where, or suggest to you what we want to put where at the airport until we know what property is developable. The entire east end of the property has been delineated, but everything on the west end and the north end of the property, the wetlands, haven't been delineated. And the delineation can vastly differ from what FEMAL has out there. And we spoke to the environmental consultant, who just did the runway wetlands delineation, and he came up with a price tag of six thousand dollars to identify and delineate all the wetlands at the airport, so we know exactly what property is developable and not. And the Airport Board voted in favor of giving a recommendation to the county to have Backroads Environmental begin the delineation of the balance of the property, and I think that's important.
It is, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Steve, I thought George said he was gonna talk to you about this. ARPC agreed to put that cost as part of that plan they were talking about?
No, initially, that was at the meeting prior that they were looking.
The last meeting, after you left, there was a discussion with Caroline Smith, I'm sorry, Caroline, myself, and George.
Right.
And she said she thinks she could include that in, as part of that site plan prep that they were going to do, and she was gonna get back to George and they were gonna get with you, so.
Site plan prep?
You remember we discussed ARPC doing, funding a site plan prep for the entire airport at the last meeting? They were, Caroline was here from ARPC.
Right.
And so, after the meeting, there was a discussion with myself, George, and Caroline. She thinks she could include this as part of that plan and funding for it. So, it's up to you, I'm just letting you know, there might have been a discussion going on you were not aware of. I apologize.
Well, this was the recommendation from the Airport Board to do exactly what I'm saying, and for that six thousand dollars to tie up potentially for months and months and months, because projects are gonna look to come into that airport, and I don't want to put them in the wrong place. So, I'd like to continue forward with the recommendation from the Board.
Commissioner, Steve is correct. They recommended that at the Board after the meeting, there was a discussion with ARPC and the Chairman of the Board about that, so.
Up to you.
Yeah, if you approve it or contingent, it's up to you, but I hear what Steve is saying, too, that you don't know how long ARPC's gonna take with that, and he needs to know that information now, is basically what he's saying.
So, my only question is, you have a quote, where's a copy of that quote?
What's that?
We don't have a copy of that quote in our, as an attachment to your report.
From Scott.
Oh, okay, I apologize, I'll get a copy of that quote.
Yeah, and I'm fine with doing a contingent upon it, but that's pertinent information that we should have.
Oh, it's important. I don't want to put somebody in the wrong place and then have no property available for a viable project that we want to bring in there. So, I guess, we'll table this?
I don't know, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we don't have any pending projects right now that's time-sensitive or anything like that, that would, says we can't wait to get the quote, right? And is that?
No, but what we need to, I want to try to assign places for different things, for industrial, recreational, aviation, and it's like, it's like having a piece of property that you want to develop, and somebody saying, well, that half of the property, you could do whatever you want with. That half of the property, we have no clue what. I just think the sooner we do it, the less mistakes the Airport Board and myself can make.
So, let's consider doing this, Commissioner. Let's consider tabling this to the next meeting, making it on the next meeting, even though he's not usually at every meeting, with the quote attached, so we can possibly take action.
All right, so, I'll add.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Add Steve to the next agenda, Commissioner.
Right, so, I would entertain a motion to do that, then.
Make that motion.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amison. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, and I'll, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I'll bring that estimate to you to the next meeting, and I'll have some discussions with George and the woman from the RFP. Also, you asked me to bring back an invoice for the signage for the site. It's basically gonna be the exact same signage, the majority of it, there's just two signs that'll be cleaned up a little bit, because the Haney College School of Aviation is coming in. So, I'll get the county coordinator copies of those signs for your review, but this is all the prices for all the signage at the site, with the exception of the main entrance sign, which I'm gonna present something to the TDC.
Okay.
So, I'd love to have Sign Design get going on this, and it'll really, between the airport being cleaned up and remarked and all the new signage, when we do the airshow, or when we do any kind of entertaining at the site of potential clients, it's gonna look like a world-class facility, and Franklin County means business. So, I'd just like to get a motion to approve, to go forward with the signage at the airport.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure the Board?
So move.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crewman. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, and just one last thing, just want to let you know, we got about twenty-four thousand five hundred in from the Air Force Research Lab. Today, they're trying to finish up the project, God willing. I had to do an airport closure, and I notified everybody involved from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM to, oh, 9:00 PM today. So, Centric wasn't too happy, but they're working around it, and we're getting their clients out, but thank God, it's a slower season now, because the kids are back in school, but hopefully, they'll be out of there. Actually, I want them out of there when the lease is up on the fifteenth, because we have to move forward with Haney. So, just letting you know that that's going on today.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Hold on just a second. Anyone have anything for Mr. Steve?
I do, I just want to make a comment. I saw where AVCON has took down their fuel prices.
Oh, yes.
And that's a, that's a biggie, because I know some of the people that fly airplanes, they will complain about the fuel prices.
I had a sit-down with Andrew about a month ago, and I explained to him that the FDOT put aircraft counters at the airport that are counting our operations, and the operations on the counters are gonna be down significantly, and I went and said, that's gonna affect our grant funding. I said, you gotta do something with these fuel prices to attract people into here, and I'd like to thank Andrew, he dropped his price on ab gas, a dollar a gallon, and it's just about the cheapest in the region right now, and we need to start advertising that to get people in there. And if people see the fuels right, they're gonna come in, they're gonna frequent our restaurants, they're gonna use his rental cars, and possibly invest in our county.
Yeah.
So.
A dollar at one time, that's a pretty good drop.
Yeah.
For gas, that's a pretty good drop. Thank you, Mr. Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Erin Griffith, attending via Zoom?
Hey there, Commissioners, how are you all doing?
Doing good. Commissioners, so we have, Ms. Erin, has number four been pulled? It's like it's a different color or something.
Yes, yes, number four, I've actually removed it from the action list. We are actually awaiting final quotes at the moment. I was hoping we would have those in time, but they didn't come in.
Okay. So, Commissioners, one through three and five through nine could be considered as consent, unless you want to pull and discuss one, any of the items. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I want to pull eight.
Eight, all right. Anyone else? I would like to pull number three, there's some stuff the Board needs to be made aware of. Any others? Okay, so we'd entertain a motion for items one through two, five through seven, and nine, on consent.
So move.
We have a motion to approve, by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Ms. Erin, let's talk for a minute about number three.
Okay, all right, would you like for me to actually read the narrative, or?
But the bigger thing is, I just want to make sure the Board is aware of the conversation we've had in the background, about the fact that we're gonna be asking the legislature to reappropriate this item, because of the amount of time it's gonna take to actually get the truck. I just want to make sure the Board's aware of that process.
Now, what, what's going on with it?
So, the, Ms. Erin, how long is the quote for? When do they say the truck would arrive?
The contract actually specifies a delivery date within six hundred and sixty days, which is roughly two years, but the vendor Tactical Fire has said that the truck is anticipated to take eighteen months.
Okay.
You know, so the two-year point actually gives them a little bit of flexibility.
Right. So, speaking with Representative Shuff, who helped run this bill and get it approved, he said that when we do it this year, we send it to the legislature again, there's an item where you can check that you're reapproving something, and he said, I've never seen them, and it's usually stuff like this that they've approved monies for, we can't be responsible for how long it's gonna take the vendor to get it. So, he said, you know, he said, I've never seen it not get reapproved, but it will have to go back through the process to get approved.
Isn't that something?
Can we use that feature every year if we're trying to get a truck for every volunteer fire department? Just, if we, is it?
You can use that feature for anything they've approved.
Oh, has to be already approved, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Because I think every year, we should apply for a fire truck for every one of our volunteer fire departments.
Yeah. It's worked out good so far.
So far.
Asked twice, and we've gotten them twice.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just want to make sure the Board was aware of that before we vote. Do y'all have any other questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, with number three, I was, I didn't know that we was over the water mouth until I read the actual item here.
Yes.
And speaking with Chief Pruitt yesterday, making this facility together, and I advised him of this, and he said, he don't see that being a problem with the water over there at all. The staff, Ohio, not.
Yeah, I don't think anybody have a problem with a two thousand five hundred dollar fire truck. I don't see that being a problem.
They just let them know.
Yeah, I think that was because of terrorists, is what they told, the reason it went up. All right, any more discussion before we make a motion? I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
So, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crewman, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Ms. Erin, let's go to number eight.
Okay, action item number eight, Commissioner Crewman requested the attached two task orders from County Engineers Duberry to develop the design document survey permit stormwater, provide construction bid specifications, and construction inspection administration for two projects, improving the Margaret Key Library parking area at the corner of 12th Street and Highway ninety-eight, and developing a delineated paved parking area with stormwater at Sylvester Williams Park. The Margaret Key Library parking improvements will be completed alongside the City of Appalachia Cola's project for new landscaping, design, and drainage improvements around the building. Board action to approve and authorize the Chairman to sign the attached task order with County Engineers Duberry and Associates for the design and bid specifications for the projects mentioned above to be paid by District Three's paving funds.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, you have some representatives, Commissioner Crewman from Margaret Key here, in case you have any questions, that's their side of the project and what they're doing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, as he indicated, is there anyone from the foundation that wanted to come up and speak?
I'm Elizabeth Perkins, I am the Chair of PALS, the Friends Group of the Appalachia Cola Margaret Key Public Library, and I just wanted to give our profound thanks to Commissioner Crewman for being willing to help fund this improvement in our parking lot. We call it Lake Margaret Key, because basically, when it rains, it turns into a giant pond, We call it Lake Margaret Key because basically, when it rains, it turns into a giant pond. And so to have it actually properly drained and, and to mark it off as a good parking lot, I think will be a benefit not only to our library, but also to all of the entities that are there at the Chapman Building. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners?
As you probably have visited, you know, the school or the library, or the auditorium, park lot is full of holes and everything, so I was willing, you know, as a commission to assist on this with my District Three paving funds. So with that said, I will make motion to approve this.
All right. So would you have a motion to approve?
Second comment.
Second by three people. Commissioner Amerson, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will say, anybody that's been out there to pick up their kid from the ABC school, it's like, you need four-wheel drive sometimes. So, so yeah, that's, that's good that we're doing this.
Now, I will ask Commissioner Kroom, is this going to make both parking lots be joined together and they'll all be smooth in between?
It's supposed to be.
Okay. That, that, okay, as long as that's a go.
That's a good answer.
That is a good answer. I wasn't trying to be a gotcha. I just was wanting to make sure it wasn't just a fruit of the library.
They're supposed to take the asphalt up, too.
That looks like a good price on it, too.
It does.
It does.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, five-o. All right, Ms. Erin.
All right, Commissioners, just some informational items for you all. On Friday, the county submitted the attached Florida Commerce Partnership Grant application with the letters of support for the development of a retail strategic plan. That document was provided. It doesn't attach into my report. Um, let's see. We also have, uh, board information, the budget update after the workshop and trim submission to the property appraiser. On Thursday, July twenty-fourth, the county held the budget workshop to set a mileage rate to go out on the trim property tax notices. At the start of the workshop, the proposed mileage rate was 5.2849, which would have generated twenty million, seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. The proposed mileage rate as presented was approximately 7.57 percent above the rollback rate of 4.9131. The rollback rate is the rate which nets the same abhorrent property tax proceeds in the current year, excluding the effects of amounts transferred to the tax increment districts and the value of new construction. And on the county's D R four twenty-four, four twenty form, as provided from the property appraiser and through the Department of Revenue, the current rollback aggregate taxes are stated as eighteen million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Or, and at the proposed budget originally, we were one million, four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars over that amount in abhorrent proceeds. Upon conclusion of the budget workshop, the proposed mileage rate was reduced to 5.0429, which was 2.7 percent, 2.7 percent above the rollback rate and approximately five hundred, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars over in abhorrent proceeds. The current mileage rate is 5.2222 and generated eighteen million, eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. The proposed mileage rate of 5.0429 for the upcoming budget will generate nineteen million, one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Trim notices will be sent to all property owners early this month, and there are two public hearings scheduled in September before the county's budget can be formally adopted. Those dates are September eighth and September twenty-second, both at 5:15 P.M. at the courthouse annex. Um, we also have a few miscellaneous project updates for you all. The Sylvester Williams Park playground equipment will be delivered within about two weeks. Um, the Appalachia Cola Health Department siding repairs will begin next week, and the Landarc EMS building materials were actually set to be delivered today, and vertical construction should begin by the end of the week.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Erin. Commissioners, do y'all have anything for Ms. Erin while we have her here?
Just a couple of things.
All right.
Erin, um, you remember me mentioning the Stan Mayfield Grant?
Yes, the Working Waterfront Program.
And that's on Working Waterfront. Did you think we've got anything down around the Alligator Point area? I know the grant itself is, um, because it's such widely used, it's probably not going to be no more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But is there anything that you can think of around in the Alligator Point area that we might could apply for a grant to try to help some of those clambers and, and the oysterman down there that, um, does that in the harbor? Can you think of anything?
Goodness. Um, we may be able to look at it just from a design perspective, um, right there at Leonard's Landing. Um, but with that being said, I believe last year, when we had a lot of the boat ramp conversations, I think the estuary there, they were actually saying it would be extremely difficult to obtain a permit. Um, is that still the case?
Well, I don't know if it's still the case, but they acted like at that time, the only place that you would ever be able to get a permit is the way they set it. In, uh, Alligator Harbor would be the old, uh,
K O eight?
FSU Marine Lab. Because it'd already been dredged before.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they acted like, they acted like at that time, that was Mr. Brucker. I don't know if he's still in that position.
I don't think he is.
But, uh.
I'm just wondering, is there anything around East Point? I, I hate to see these grants come out in Franklin County, because, you know, we still do have work, although some people like to, to say differ. Um, you know, I, I believe we still have working waterfronts here.
Well, there's definitely still a lot of commercial stuff in East Point.
Yeah.
That is on the water. Uh, might not be seafood related, but it's still commercial.
Yeah, that's why.
So, yeah, that might be something to look at.
So, I mean, that's what I'm looking at, you know, we need to utilize this because it is, it is out there and, um, and everything. But like I said, it's not but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think the award to every applicant, if, if they pick you. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that. The other thing is, Erin, when are the FORDAT grants, uh, uh, supposed to begin?
New cycle?
I believe, I believe that window is actually opening sometime in September. I know Bree is, is working on, um, actually two applications. Um, one for Sylvester Williams Park, and the other one will be, um, for the pickleball court at Gene Sewell Park as well.
And remember, we want to go after the pickleball court in Landarc and the pickleball court in Appalachia Cola at Sylvester Williams. On that, and if nothing else, we might can do something else somewheres with some more funding somewheres we can find it. But we, we're going to have to get what we get this year, because I'm just worried about next year. You know what I'm saying? And if we can get anything this year and go ahead and get it knocked out, we need to do that, because it's looking iffy.
And Mr. Chairman, same thing goes with the RIF grants, Erin. I know we're kind of open with that cycle right now. So I think I've talked to Justin about it, about stormwater drainage stuff throughout the whole county. So if we can work on that, I appreciate it.
Just, just more assignments, that's all.
Yeah.
I will say, I will take a minute to make sure the public is aware. The legislature's going to be meeting a lot earlier this year. They actually start in October. Even though they just finished in July, they're starting again in October. And our legislative delegation meeting will be in this room on the twenty-first. So that's two weeks and one day away.
Twenty-first of this?
Yes.
August?
August twenty-first at two thirty.
Two thirty?
Yep.
August twenty-fifth?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ooh.
Yeah, they're going to start session in October. So anyway, a lot of these conversations, we're getting better, get wrapped up and
Yeah.
ready to submit, that's all I'm saying.
And early preparations.
Anything else from Ms. Erin, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Ms. Erin, thank you always.
Thank you all.
Yep. Mr. Marone?
Hey, Commissioners, so the first two, uh, action items basically can go as consent. Um, the FDOT East Point Agreement is an update to allow the installation of Welcome to East Point signs along Highway ninety-eight in East Point. They just needed a new agreement to do that. The second one is basically the seventy-five, Highway sixty-five commercial site plan application. That has, that was approved. It was pending the ultimate approval of the land use and zoning change. You did that. So, uh, the site plan is in front of you for approval today. Uh, it's already been approved, I'm, I'm sorry, recommended for approval by planning and zoning.
Okay. So all the rest of your items are list, discussion and action?
Oh, yes, sir.
So we'll have to handle them one at a time?
Mm-hmm.
So Commissioners, uh, we can consider one and two as one item unless y'all want to pull them apart and talk about them individually.
I'm good with doing both, Chairman.
All right.
Make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Amerson.
Commissioner Sanders seconded it, didn't he?
Yeah.
Oh, did she? I didn't hear. Sorry. Commissioner Sanders made the second. I must have said it at the same time. Uh, any more discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is a five-o vote.
Commissioners, item three. Prior to the plan, uh, the P U D discussions, the board was prepared to start the process for special zoning district for St. George Island. That process was paused to address P U Ds. Um, it was always the board's intention to address many of the issues specific to St. George Island with a special zoning district. And you can strike that third sentence there. Um, it, it, with the exception is, is the board still willing to move forward, even though we're having another public hearing with the P U D? I, I think we should do them concurrently.
Yes.
Um, there's some that have the thought that we should, actually should have done the, um, special zoning district first, and then the P U D. That's fine, that's in the past, but I would like to move forward. I would like to start the process of creating a citizen advisory board of business owners and homeowners over on St. George Island to, to assist confer with staff and the board of county commissioners to help create this special zoning district.
So Commissioners, this is, it's been a while since we've talked about it, so I want to make sure you know what we're talking about. There are several issues that need to be addressed. Uh, number one is fill, the amount of fill, type of fill. Uh, number two is the absolute clear cutting of lots. Uh, I would like to see, we're going to have a board weigh in on it, but I would like to see, uh, or, you know, some advise, some advice from the residents. But I would like to see if, if, if it absolutely has to be done to build a house, I would like to see some kind of replanting plan or something put back. Uh, but anyway, those are the kind of things we need to discuss. The island is different from everywhere else in the county, uh, as far as those concerns go, because they are barrier islands. So that's, that's some of what we had talked about that got us to this point.
Should this be done before out there above here?
Uh, well, so this is going to be, starting the process, we're going to actually formulate the group, and it's not going to be a quick process. You know what I mean? It might take a month or so to get it, you know, ironed out like everybody wants it to be and up for a vote. So I'm fine with doing them concurrently.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll say I'm in total agreement with this. I, I do know, and I realize that St. George Island is its own little entity, um, but Alligator Point is, we got so many different areas that are so different. Um, um, so I'm, I'm good with this. But I do want to make a note that we do need to address these in other areas of the county, too, with just some ordinance in general. But I know St. George Island is specific, and that's what we're talking about, and it's important, too. So with that, as long as no one has any questions, comments, or concerns, um, I'll make a motion to create this special zoning district, including the citizens advisory board.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the, uh, procedure of going forward with the creation of a St. George Island Special Zoning District, including the citizens advisory board of five to seven members. By Commissioner Ward.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, sir.
Commissioners, the packet, you should have kind of a tally sheet for the, the, to fill that vacant seat on the T D C board. I'm asking you to fill it out, uh, give me your top five. Uh, pay attention that, you know, each slot from one through five, uh, gives that candidate a different score. I'm going to tally the scores up, and then after Attorney Schuler's report, I'll come back with everyone's score, and you can select from the group who you would like to appoint to that T D C board. And I'll continue as we, if you.
You just go and fill it out now, or you just take a, a five-minute recess and do it?
Up to.
Then, procedure, can we do that? Can we take a recess and then fill it out, or how do we need to do it?
I'll, I'll do it here.
Okay, all right.
I'll pause as you do. Just let me know when I can proceed. And it's, for the public, I'll, as you guys are doing that, there were eight candidates. Six, yeah, eight candidates, and so what I will do, once it's done, there'll be a tally total sheet, and I will put it out there to candidates and, and, you know, and their scores. Add that to the agenda once this is done. Commissioner, I'll, I'll tally those while Attorney Schuler's doing his report and having the totals back to you. Um, I can move on to item five.
Hold on, ma'am. We're not voting right now, so what are you raising in for?
I just have a question about actually something that I overlooked on the prior.
Okay, what is that?
Barbara's keeping me in order.
Yeah.
Um, with respect to the citizens advisory board, um, that will be part of this S G I Special Zoning District, um, I see that, let's see, it says Chairman Jones, Ms. Bree Robinson, and I, Mr. Marone.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will meet with interested candidates and present a five-to, to seven-member cab for the board's approval. I'm just curious about, um, what the process is going to look like to gather the names for those candidates, or if there's a plan for that.
Actually, I was going to advertise, and, oh, after they approved it, I'm sorry.
No, you know more about it than I do.
Yes, actually, what I was going to do, ma'am, is basically, after they approved it today, come back with a selection process that the board may, is comfortable with following. I don't know if they want me to advertise it, or, you know, actually, basically, no, I didn't think that far ahead right now as to the process. But the point would be basically to sit with, they'll be interviewed by the chairman, because the island is his district, and Bree, Ms. Robinson is the new county planner, and myself there for, because I want to make sure they're all aware on, from my end, that everybody's bound by the sunshine law and the ethics. And I, I, I just want to play that role with it. And basically, the chairman will, it's, he is, that is his district. He will tell us which ones he would like placed on the board, and we bring it to the full board, and they, this board can reject all or any of the candidates on there. We go back again until the full board is comfortable with the entire five or seven-member citizen advisory board.
Okay, so just stay tuned to your regular meetings for more information on how that process is going to develop.
At the next meeting, I have a better, I'm sorry, a better detailed process explaining how we're going to do it. I just didn't want to do that without the board not even wanting to create that citizen advisory board. Had to make sure they were going to do that this morning.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Marone, you want to do number five?
Oh, okay. Uh, the T D C Administrative Services Contract Advertisement is almost completed. As part of the ad, I would like to include the duration of the contract. Should it be for two, three, or four years? Completed ad will be forwarded to you before it's sent for publishing. As part of today's discussion, I would also like to extend the vendor contracts to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. That was the, that was an, uh, an idea Commissioner Amerson presented to the board at the last meeting. There will be no other changes to those contracts except for the term of the contract. Vendor contracts that start on October one, twenty twenty-six will have the same duration as the admin services contract that will start on October one, twenty twenty-five. So these contracts will expire and will be advertised on different years. And that was the wish of this board. You don't want your vendors and your admin being advertised at the same year and selected at the same year. So I want to make sure everybody's comfortable with extending the vendor contracts until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And tell me, how long will all these contracts run for? Because whatever you do for admin, to keep it offsetting years, you have to do for, well, you should do. You don't have to, Commissioners, you should do for your vendors.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Yes.
So with the admin contract, what was the years before? Was it two, was it three-year, four-year contract?
Commissioner, I hate to say this to you, but we have advertised it since twenty eighteen? Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Commissioners?
I think it was twenty nineteen.
Yes.
Yeah, we've advertised it since then.
The, the admin?
Yep.
Sorry, didn't look. One time?
Since twenty nineteen.
Missed a year. So Commissioner Kroom, to give you some history, in all the years we've had T D C, there's basically been two, um, admin. It was, in the beginning, it was, uh, I don't know what Kurt Blair called.
Kurt.
Called his company, and then that, now it's the, um, the chamber.
I like the four years myself, you know, so I'm, I, you know, I don't have a problem with four years.
It's fair for advertising that whoever's applying know how long the contract. Because if it's, if it's too short, they might not like it, vice versa. If it's too long, they might not either.
Sometimes you have so much of a turnover, um, too, but I, I personally like the four years myself, like we do on a lot of the professional contracts.
Was it four years before this last, do we know?
I think it was three with a couple of.
Extensions?
Extensions, wasn't it?
So four.
Probably four.
It was built into the contract.
Yeah. The, the answer is, I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Yes.
It was two or three, Mr. Chairman, and then, then some extensions.
So now we're talking about just going with the straight. So now we're talking about just going with the straight four years is what you're proposing?
And that's where I'm getting at, is what I'm insisting.
I wanna clarify something, though. In here, Mr. Marone, it says, discussing action to approve the extension of the vendor contracts. Do you mean all vendors, even the admin?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I should've said both the TDC, to the extension of the TDC vendor contracts, and to tell me how many years you want all your contracts related to TDC to go for.
Right.
So you will have to amend my request for the motion. When I said vendor notes, sir, to answer your question, that excludes the admin.
Okay.
I kinda treat them separately.
So the way it's written, we've already decided to take the TDC administrative services out to bid?
Yes, you have.
Okay.
That you've done, you just haven't told me how many years you want me to put in the ad, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to catch up, sorry, okay.
We did that last meeting, then, was it last meeting?
It was a meeting before. Meeting before, yes, ma'am.
I know it was somewhere.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just one thing we need to consider right here, okay, if we're gonna, we're gonna move the, we may wanna just stick with two years for this year, and then revisit it, or this contract extension? Or this contract period, because we have this potential legislation that may come down, that may be where they, you know, reiterate that TDC money, yeah.
So they were talking about doing this last time?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's gonna come back up.
Take it away, take it all away?
So that way, it won't have us in a position where we're sitting there.
I see that point, too.
Yeah, I didn't think about that.
If that happens, we may potentially have to very, you know, take a serious look at bringing that in-house, and form another department.
I see that point, 'cause then we could be, if we have a contract for four years, and they get rid of it, then we're stuck in a contract, and, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, I mean, I would at least err on the side of caution, or at least, you know-
For right now.
Yeah, for right now, until we see how the dust settles back next year.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that, 'cause yeah, if we, we bring, even if we bring the admin in, vendors will always be vendor contracts, they won't be in-house, but there's always a chance for admin having to come in-house if the legislature forces our hand, basically.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we'll do two for now, and then we'll, when we get to vendors next year, we'll revisit it then?
Yeah, that's what I would suggest. I mean, if the board's comfortable with that, do we need to make a motion on that?
We do need to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so let me make sure I got the motion right, and we'll go forward from there. We're making a motion to extend the vendor contracts to September 30th of next year?
Yes, sir.
And to advertise the administrative contract as a two-year contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that is a motion made by Commissioner Amerson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you. Mandatory garbage pickup workshop, the county was notified from FWC that they will amend the $341,000 that we just got from the legislature into the previous set of money we got, which will slightly give us over a million dollars for the purchase of, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought.
Bear resistant can.
Bear resistant can, thank you, sir. So with that, the chairman talked about, he said the last meeting, scheduling a workshop, because the way we write the contract with the vendor, FWC's state-approved vendor, will depend if we have mandatory garbage pickup or not.
Yep.
So basically, if we have mandatory garbage pickup, everybody gets a can, it makes it easy. There's an online database that they will give us, we have to pay for it, let me stop saying give, that we have to pay for, that we will be able to track every single can and its location in the county. Or they got chips, imagine chips in garbage cans, and, but, if we do not have mandatory garbage pickup, then it makes the job a little bit more, and I'm not saying this as a proponent for mandatory garbage, I'm just saying what's gonna happen, then they have to selectively go to who has an account and give them a garbage can there, which may take a little bit longer, but it is what it is, you know? They want the contract, they have to do it on basis, but the chairman has asked that we at least consider mandatory garbage pickup, for more reasons than that, and we've been talking about this, mandatory garbage pickup for how many years now?
A little while.
Oh, Lord.
Yes, which, which would allow, which would basically save the county money from buying the equipment that Fonda has to buy for the curbside pickup, basically. And he could reallocate a staff and that money to other needed things in his operation.
Well, not only that, Mr. Chairman, but we've gotta look at our landfill running out of room. So we gotta figure something out in that aspect, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, we'll be turning into, hopefully, we're still in the process at the transfer station, that's correct.
Mr. Marone, do you think we have a realistic chance to schedule this in September?
I would tell you-
Have two budget hearings, and we'll have a PUD hearing.
Yeah, I would tell you, now is, I would say, no, we're trying to get to that PUD hearing as soon as we can. I would tell you, October would be a better bet for this. Keep in mind, we also will have to, we're planning on inviting FWC to this meeting, so they can explain their part, and the vendor, 'cause I really want the board to have a chance to basically interview that vendor, and see how you feel about their plan and what they would like to do in the county.
Okay.
So I just kinda wanna get some, basically, I'm asking you guys to start a look at some dates in October that you are free, and let me narrow it down, so I can give you a hard date, and start advertising that, 'cause I think that is something you really also would like the public to come in and weigh in on. This is a cultural change for Franklin County Commissioners, you know, going to mandatory garbage pickup. I mean, people are going to get billed whether they want to or not for garbage pickup, that's different.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
October, the second week of October, I won't, I'll be, it would not work for me, I won't be here.
Just letting you know that, but I am yours.
So you're not asking for a date today, you're just asking for the ability to make the schedule?
Yes, basically, asking you guys to look at your schedule, give me a call, and at the next meeting, I'll put out a couple of dates and see if we can pin it down.
Do we need to make a motion and vote on that?
Not, I shouldn't have asked for that, no, just making sure we're good. Second week is bad for Amerson and Crew. I'm letting my notes, thank you.
Let's go to number seven, sir.
Okay, policies for FAC, you know, that conference is coming up. You guys had talked at the last meeting about maybe submitting policies. I didn't receive anything from anyone, so I guess we're good with, with just attending, and attending the conference, and basically, let's see what other policies you guys are gonna be voting on with FAC?
Mr. Chairman, it's Attorney Shuler and I, he's gonna address it on his report, I'll come up with a policy that we're gonna submit, and then the other one, I was thinking about submitting, we decided it was a moot point, because of the way the legislature's doing with the sales tax issue, so we're just not doing that.
And once again, we need to look at our schedules, because September 17th is a meeting, a scheduled meeting date. So I don't know, is it Tuesday good for everybody, the 16th?
I can do the Tuesday, but we have to be leaving to go out of town that day. And I'll be leaving to go out of town that day to attend the conference.
So try to keep the agenda very short.
So do we, we need to take, we do need to motion and vote on that, correct?
Yes.
To move that date on the 17th to the 16th?
Yes, I'd like to inform the public as soon as possible.
Alright, we have a motion to do that from Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, so we would be moving our September meeting date to the 16th of September, not the 17th?
Reminded.
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, item eight, Mr. Rachel Chestnut resigned from the Planning and Zoning Adjustment Board. Due to other PZA members' schedule conflicts, it was likely that we wouldn't have a quorum on Tuesday, August 12th, for that regular meeting, so in consultation with staff, we decided to go ahead and move the meeting to the 19th. We, everyone, the board members that are still on the roster, they all can attend, so we should not have a quorum issued for the 19th. However, so now we have two seats that are still vacant. District Four Commissioner Amerson is, every day is under hunt for a PZA member, but we also have a large seat that's vacant, that can come from anywhere in the county. So if you talk to your constituents, I'm gonna put an ad on the website, talk to your constituents, if they're interested in serving, please contact myself, and I will forward their information to the planning staff, so they can have a discussion with somebody that's interested, let them know what, you know, what's expected of them, the meetings, when the meetings are, et cetera, et cetera. And then I can bring any recommendations to the board for approval, to have them see that the more members on that board, the better it is. Make sure we keep those things moving. One of the things we might bring to you in the future is a request, certain items, well, Bree, I'm sorry, Mrs. Robinson, our planner, she said there's been a change in the legislature, certain items have to come directly to the board. Now they, I'm sorry, it's a staff review, they do not count to the county commission anymore, and there are other things that we may allow staff to review, then bring to you for approval, but that's in the future. Right now, we just need to fill those seats and keep that board meeting once a month, as they do. If I may, I'll move on to item nine, Commissioner Sanders discussed, no, it was Commissioner Ward, who discussed the FWC meeting earlier. Okay, so, yes, so, you know, it's on Wednesday the 13th and Thursday the 14th, it's on the website, the location is also on the website, the 85 Academy Drive in Havana, Florida, both days, it starts at 8:30. On the, on Thursday, Thursday the 14th, it's expected that the full commission will be there. Mr. John Creamer, the regional director, contacted me, there are seats, there're gonna be seats, assigned seats for you guys, saved seats for you guys. However, more importantly, so we don't have the problem we had at the last FWC meeting, the Commissioners, the five of you will be able to address the FWC commission prior to public comments, so you will not be part of public comments, you will address the board prior to public comments. If you're planning on attending the day before to discuss the bear hunt, Mr. Creamer needs to know if you'd like to speak to the board, 'cause he will offer the same convenience for county Commissioners attending.
I'm probably gonna go, but I don't know if I'm gonna speak or not.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'm definitely gonna be there, but I'm gonna be there on Thursday. And I did, just so the board is aware, I'm not sure if any of the other Commissioners have been to this venue, but there are multiple buildings, and I emailed Mr. John Creamer to ask what building specifically it was gonna be in, so that everybody's not trying to go and figure out what building it is, and be late, or whatever. So I'm waiting and emailed back, so when he emailed me back, I CC'd you in the email, so he'll let you know if we wanna let the public aware after that.
I'll put it right back, I'll update the website with the specific address and location. Okay.
Mr. Marone, I'm not gonna be able to go till Thursday, but did, I reached out to him again, I don't think I ever got a hold of him. I don't know if the sheriff was planning on speaking on the 13th, he was very outspoken at the beginning of all this, so I don't know if he's planning on attending, but, you know what I mean?
Commissioner Amerson's looking like he has an answer for you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The sheriff is not gonna speak.
Mr. Creamer spoke with me and said that the sheriff told him that he wasn't, so he asked me if I would speak.
And I told him, yeah.
On the bear, on the bear?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be there on the 13th and the 14th, so.
Okay, well, I just know that they, the process kinda started from Franklin County, that's all there is, I'm guessing.
Yeah, and I think that they were really, you know, was hoping the sheriff would, but I don't know if it was a schedule conflicts and things or whatnot, but I just know for a fact that the sheriff said no, he wouldn't be there, so.
I didn't know that, that's cool. I just knew I couldn't be there both days as well, so that's why I was there.
I'm gonna be there, but I'm, I'm gonna go see what the end result is on the bear hunt, but.
The other one is just a little bit of good news, at St. Paul, you see all of my information, they, they're officially listed on the National Register of Historic Places. St. Paul and Applejackola.
That's good.
Very good.
We should be able to get some grants.
Think about that, Commissioner.
From Mr. Marone?
And again, let me do a quick tally, and hopefully, by the time Attorney Shuler's done, I'll use a quick spreadsheet here, and I should have that information for you.
Yeah, so we will still have to do that by motion, or is it settled by the vote?
By motion.
Okay, I wanna make sure, go ahead, sir.
Oh, okay. The first action item on my report, response to Commissioner Ward's request that y'all review and consider submitting an FAC policy request. The policy request that was discussed with me by Commissioner Ward is a proposed amendment to essentially what we refer to as shade meetings. The shade meeting, under the current statute, only allows us to meet when we're in litigation. You know, since we had this Burt Harris Act hit us, you know, the thought was maybe, you know, the same rationale could be applied to having a private shade meeting for a Burt Harris claim. So that's what's before you today, y'all have seen this before, the last meeting. The only additional information is there's an online portal that has to be filled out if you approve this, and I have provided you with a draft proposal, where is it? Ah, there it is, for the board to consider approving that narrative, so that then Commissioner Ward can submit it into that online portal. I will tell you that, just having been on the Board of Directors of the County Attorneys Association, this has been tried and failed in the past, I can't remember all the details, but the legislature has had a very cold shoulder to any proposals like this in the past, is what I've-
Well, and I have seen policy proposals die during the fact process as well.
Sure.
As long as the board thinks we should tackle it, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but if y'all think it's a waste of time, then we'll-
I have no problem with submitting, we'll see where it goes.
Never hurts to ask.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ward to accept.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Amerson. We're gonna put, forward this policy proposal to the floor of association counties for their legislative process. Any more discussion before we vote?
Who plans to submit this policy?
I'll, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take the lead, I'll go to my fact policy thing, and I guess, I don't think, I guess I may need to get clarification, since I'm a vice chair on the HSJ board, I don't think that's a conflict, yeah.
No, you don't.
Alright, then I don't mind taking that job.
No, there's no conflict at all.
And I'll make sure it's due Friday, so I'll get right on it today.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Alright, and the next action item was brought to my attention by Commissioner Sanders. There's been a request by the Alligator Point St. Teresa Volunteer Fire Department, you know, they've got their new department, they still have the, or we now own the old building, and they would like to use that old building for training purposes for themselves and other VFDs within the county. They've assured me there will be no fires started, they will not be breaking any glass. The way it was described to me is essentially like ladder training, and probably some other training as well. I don't wanna mislead you into thinking it's just ladders, but no fire, the no breaking in glass. And they said they would add the county as an additional insured on their insurance policy there. I spoke with Mr. Ray Pierce, is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
And he said he's taking the lead on getting that taken care of for the insurance coverage.
I tell them to realize, though, that as soon as we're ready to move and realign 370 Alligator Drive, that we will be having to tear that down, and they understand that, but what it is, the way the new firehouse is built, they can't extend the ladders far enough, and the old firehouse, you can, so that's the reason why they want that. But I don't have any problem with this myself, and I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Commissioners, do y'all have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is a five-o vote.
Alright, Commissioners, I don't ordinarily go over information items unless the board wants me to, but this is a big one. The legislature, effective July 1st, has fundamentally changed how Platts are approved in counties. They're no longer going to come before you, I mean, there's a lot of detail in here, I'm not gonna go to all the detail, but essentially, this county commission in a public setting will not be considering or approving Platts any longer. You are required to designate an administrative person. He's not looking at me. But it can be your chief administrative officer, or it could- or it could be uh, your, your planner. Uh, so I'm not asking y'all to make that decision today. I'll, as I said in the report, I'll bring you back a proposed resolution. I have to sit down and talk with Mr. Morone and, and Ms. Bree and find out uh, which one's going to be, have their name filled in on the resolution at, at your next meeting. Um, uh, other than that.
I'd like to be heard on that.
Ma'am?
I would, I'd like to be heard on that issue.
All right.
So, plat, Barbara Sanders, plats are governed by chapter one-seventy-seven. I didn't follow why they did this legislation, but I agree that just putting it in front of y'all for the rubber stamp is probably not necessary. But I would ask that when you set it up, that you have a final say person and a person that looks over that final say person's shoulders, because every tiny little detail on a plat is important forevermore. Every little legal description, every little corner marker, and your planner will know how to follow that checklist, but it's a double, triple check uh, process.
Well, Ms. Barbara, we'll do exactly everything the statute allows us to do, I assure you.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they tightened up the time deadline.
Yes.
Quite a bit. Uh, we, we have to, within seven days, basically send a written notice acknowledging the receipt of the plat.
Yes.
Um, and then send them also a notice of deficiency letter if there aren't any, I mean, give them a time deadline, essentially, you know, once that receipt is acknowledged, you know, an estimated time when it's going to be finished, and we can extend that deadline, basically, is the way I'm reading this. So, it's, it's, it's gonna be tough on your staff.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, though, on this. Um, for one, the state seems to be preempting us on a lot of stuff, and it's quite frustrating.
Yep.
You know, they're ta- starting to take away local control.
Yep.
And home rule, and I don't like that. And I know we fight about, we fight uh, on, from the state level with that, uh, going to these fact conferences, but that, that's just a statement on the first one. But the second one is, with the plats, we really don't, we don't really vote on every single one. We only vote on the plats.
Right.
That are like a zoning change, or, you know, land use change, things like that, correct?
Well, you, you are the, well, you were, the final authority on plats. Um, you are no longer the final authority on plats, you will never see them. Uh, it will all be handled in-house administratively, by whomever you designate uh, in the resolution, as that, that chief administrative person. Um, you, you are also the final decision maker, obviously, on rezonations and cop plans and ordinances and everything else.
They don't preempt us on this, do they? Anyway, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
All right. And we'll have some public hearings uh, on the twentieth?
There have been three. Uh, let's see, what are they? No, I'm sorry, I keep taking these off, 'cause I couldn't find my bifocals this morning. Uh, da, 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 uh, yes, the E-nine-one-one address ordinance will be heard at eleven o'clock on eight-twenty. Um, the ordinance amending the MSBU ordinance to remove the referendum requirement will also be heard at eight, on eight-twenty. Uh, I scheduled it at eleven-oh-five, 'cause I'll, I always, if we get, if I give fifteen minutes and you're finished in seven, then we're sitting there, you know, idling for seven minutes to get started. Um, and then at eleven-ten will be the public hearing on, an ordinance banning fires on all public beaches. Um, and then the rest of it deals with the code enforcement magistrate agreement, the reef materials manifested, Mr. Morone uh, signed, and um, I'm told that thirty, thirty or thirty-six reef models will be deployed here around the middle of August on the Buddy Ward Reef. And then, well, actually, there has been a change on number nine. Um, I was scheduled to have a phone conference on Thursday at ten a.m. with Duke Energy to discuss with them the uh, the board's request that, that they cost share the eleven-thousand five-hundred dollar costs for the road construction plans they're requiring. But late last night, I got an email that uh, one of the persons I requested to attend cannot be available because they're on vacation, so we're going to have to reschedule.
Uh, on the, uh, I know it's just information, excuse me, I know it's just informational, but the, on the public hearing, uh, given the light of some of the conversations we've had today, public hearing we're having talking about the banning of fires on public beaches, uh, before that becomes a, a draft that comes to the, the final version. Excuse me. I know some may not believe me, but I've actually received more email about this fire ban than I have anything else lately. Uh, and I, I think it'd be more li- in line with the public interest if we consider this just during turtle season.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to make that on the record before we start by doing the final draft version of it.
Well, y'all, I need board direction, 'cause your last direction was for it to be year-round, so. What's the pleasure of the board this morning? Make the fire ban seasonal for turtle seasons, is that?
Yeah.
Can we get that while, a motion and a second, 'cause I, I.
I made the motion.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner Creamer.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, yes, sir.
With a comment.
Second.
I do have a comment, though.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
You know, I, I know, and I agree, however, everything's been done today, but uh, who wants a fire on the beach in the middle of summer, anyway? I just, I don't understand that, but I just wanted to just throw that out there. I'm super hot, but, okay, that's fine, nevermind.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Well, I think another thing, too, that we might need to discuss, in discussing this item, is when we get to this public hearing, and maybe it's working good that it's coming this way, 'cause the request actually came from the, the, the people that do the turtle patrol about the sea turtle season, the nesting season. Uh, but, you know, 'cause the language of our ordinance talks about people removing stuff from the beach, but it doesn't address the fact that if they use a fire, they should have to remove the fire. So, anyway, that's something we might need to look at, too.
And, Mr. Chairman, I know it still takes away, though, that there's dangers that people, so, I don't know.
All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, anything else for Attorney Schuler?
I have one. So, I had one, Lanar Fire Department called me yesterday and asked me when, when we're gonna proceed on look, you know, looking at the individual MSBUs according to the fire depart- individual fire departments. And I told them I really didn't know. And um, and now you've got the MSBU here to, for us to be able to take the vote instead of the people take the vote, or that's what the public hearings about. So, I just want y'all to know that Lanar is saying they, they need the, they need the increase. So, I'm just, I just said I could convey the message, and uh, and the other thing is, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Uh, I've had some calls from, um, and Mr. Schuler, you can help me answer this. I've had some calls from Alligator Point, and that, our beach access is down there at night. We got people partying. So, who do we call the sher-?
Sheriff's Department.
Or who do they call the sheriff's office?
Yep.
On the partying?
Yep.
Because it's right there at the sign that says public beach access, so. And they're so close to the people's houses down there, too.
It's, it's jammed.
So, I'll tell them to be sure to call the sheriff's office. And we agree. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, anything else for Attorney Schuler before we go to Commissioner Comments? Okay, Commissioner Comments, do y'all have anything, commissioners, you'd like to say?
I'm not the TDC.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where'd Michael go?
I'm right behind you.
I, I didn't remember, 'cause I didn't see Michael, sorry. You gotta tell us the outcome of the vote before we go to Commissioner Comments.
You know, I was trying to predict for you guys, but you know, you know how technology works. Okay, Commissioner, so, oh, sorry, let's go to the microphone, you know? So, uh, commissioners, based on your votes, uh, Mr. Turbin Mattson is the highest vote getter with fifteen points. Uh, Ms. Lee Cobal is second with fourteen points. Then, uh, Mr. Cutler Edwards has twelve points, Roxanne Christie has eleven, Carlton Whaley has ten. I don't, I don't, if I needed to go any further down the list, that's good enough. Usually the board, for the most part, is appointed the highest, the one with the highest most points, but.
Looks like Mr. Mattson's gonna be our new TDC.
We do, do, we do need to do it by motion and vote.
Is that correct? Question.
Yes.
Okay, who'd you say, I, I couldn't hear you, the first is who?
I'm sorry, the highest uh, uh, point getter was T- uh, Torgan Mattson.
Okay.
Hope I'm pronouncing his name correct. Second was Lee Cobal.
I got that.
Okay.
I did, but my question is, and this, this may be a dumb question, but I'm gonna ask it, 'cause I'm good at doing that, but uh, with, with the TDC's estate, I mean, uh, Mr. Mattson, he's, he, what's his occupation? He's an attorney, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Doesn't it have to be tourism-related, the occupation of the, of the board members?
This is an at-large seat, right?
Yeah, this could be.
It is at large.
Collector of the Tax.
But there's still, there's still a reference to the language.
You know what I'm talking about?
There is.
To something, who, somebody who's involved in, in, in tourism in some way.
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember if that's what.
I mean, that's, yeah, I'm probably paraphrasing.
That's the way I kind of interpreted it. That's why I was uh, asking this question, while we can all talk about it. And I have no issue with, with any of them, actually. I just, that kinda stuck out there.
Yes.
Um, and I just wanted to make sure, or maybe we need to.
God bless you.
Ask Attorney Schuler his opinion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I haven't seen any of the applications, so I don't know what he put down as his qualifications for the position, but if y'all want me to look at it, I, I can.
They don't, I thought, Mr. Chairman, that the Florida statute, that the, that they didn't have to be a collector of the tax, that what was at large.
And he's not a collector, but they have to.
Be involved in tourism.
Be involved with tour, that, they have to be affected by tourism, or they're, they're.
The law's inserted statute, 'cause we're entering a lot of statute claims.
So, what about like your tourism event stuff, and he listed them, is that being involved, or is that qualified?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, honestly, I, whenever I, the way I interpret it is, is they, you know, own a dress shop, or only, I mean, I'm just gonna start throwing stuff out there. I mean, you know, that, that, that's the way I kind of interpret it. Now, if we start saying, well, I worked at the, I volunteered at the oyster cook-off, is that, I mean, that's not really your occupation, or your livelihood doesn't revolve around it, so to speak. And that's where I was kinda getting lost in the weeds. So, I mean, while we got a bunch of lawyers here, I mean.
We, we outnumber the uh, members of the public, all this.
But no, I'm just, I'm just trying to get that, that clarity on that.
I know it was three to two.
I'll have to look into it, but I would request, it's, it's been a long morning, if, if, do we have to make a decision today? If so, why don't we take a lunch break, let me look at it during lunch, and come back, or just defer the decision until your August twentieth meeting?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, who's the TDC chair, how are we looking for quorum at the next TDC meeting?
Well, we've not missed one yet, but we've been really close. The last one, we had the minimum number.
And the meeting is, when's the next meeting?
Uh, the thirteenth, I think, a week from today, at six o'clock.
Okay.
We're, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We're only missing one seat at the TDC right now, right?
Yeah.
Y'all just, y'all ain't showing up, or what, what's the TDC?
I don't know.
Again, if, I'm an Attorney Schuler, if you guys wanted to do some research, we put it on the, on the twentieth meeting for, for final decision, and I'll.
When y'all meet again, Mr. Chairman?
The thirteenth.
A week from today.
So, we're gonna have a meet middle, in between, so.
I'm fine with that. I mean, I wanna clarify, I, I don't think it's gonna matter, because according to the, the research they done for, they did for us, the last company we hired to look at the impact of tourism in the county.
Yeah.
They said that ninety-two percent of our jobs in the county are either tourism or tourism-related jobs. I mean.
Yeah.
It's kinda, it's really the only income we have right now, is tourism.
I'm okay with we're delaying it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, we got the vote in.
We, we do, we do need to.
We can just get clarity on that.
We do need to vote to table the vote, I guess, is the best way to say it, correct?
Well, yes, you've, you've tallied, you've got a ranking.
Yes.
Uh, I would just suggest tabling the whole matter until the next meeting.
Okay.
I make a motion to table it until the twentieth of August.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion to table by Commissioner Sanders, we have a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? Other than what we've already had? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is tabled to the twentieth of August. I vote a five-o. All right, anything else, sir?
That was it for me.
All right. Commissioner Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, tomorrow, uh, from two to six at Franklin County School, who we play for, Foundation, you know, Second Chance Act, Heart Cream, who will be there, um, free for students from ten on up. So, that'll be tomorrow. And I do know, like, over at Port St. Joe, a couple cases been found on.
Yes, I do.
I love that saying that on news, so. I know, um, it was, uh, we was trying to get this company, or this organization down here, and was able to do that. So, they'll be here tomorrow, so to spread the news if, uh, you can. Wasn't it a family member, Commissioner Creamer?
Yes.
A young lady is a family member of the guy that, that, that athlete that actually passed away? That was. And she's a good athlete, too. That was chilling, that was, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, can we put that on our website?
We sure can.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I got the information, I sure could.
Any other Commissioner Comments?
I just got one. I, I know our girls went to Louisiana to play in the World Series, and they didn't bring home the trophy, but they made us proud.
Played their heart out.
When they first played that first game, they beat Mississippi twenty-two to nothing. Yeah, they made us proud. And that is awful to have to play ball in Louisiana. The heat is, the, the, the heat is so bad out there.
Humidity, oh my goodness.
Yeah, we went out there one time before, and we were having to play at midnight, it was so hot during the day. You know, so, anyway, my hat's off to the girls twelve and under, they make me proud, and I'm looking forward next, for, for next year, for both the uh, softball and the baseball. I like to see them teams play, I'm telling you.
Any other Commissioner Comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a comment, it's more of a ask to the public. And to echo again, the FWC oyster meeting is Thursday, we're first on the agenda. We, we've all seen the comments on Facebook, can we have more than ten people from Franklin County show up, actually show up, that's not elected officials, and speak up on behalf of our county and the oyster industry? If you, if you got an opinion on it, whether I agree with it or not, at least show up and support our bay getting back open. Because sitting at home and getting on social media and tagging everybody is not working, obviously, 'cause you've been doing it for five years. It's an hour and a half drive. If you need a ride, call me. I'll, I need somebody to ride with me. Keep me awake. But anyway, that's all.
Just not any of us.
Why, we're not voting on something.
We talked about ethics, we talked about all this stuff today, so.
Any other Commissioner Comments? Meeting is.